How many members do we have present? How many? Ten, okay. Ready? Okay. All right, meeting called to order. We have ten members present, so we do have forum. Before we start getting into the member presentations, we have a lot to go over tonight. So I would prefer those that have already done their handouts to just kind of give us a Cliff Notes version of those, please. Okay? You want me to pick up the mic?
Okay. So, yeah, those that provided handouts for tonight, please go ahead and just give me the Cliff Notes version, or give the board a Cliff Notes version of what you want to communicate to the neighborhood. All right? Because we do have a lot to go over tonight. Okay. So with that said, let's start off with the monthly reports. Honolulu Fire Department?
Hello, my name is firefighter Charlton. And tonight for you, I have the monthly reports. The statistics provided below represent confirmed number of incidents in the NHB's geographical area for the previous month. For more details on the incidents and related mapping information, please visit the fire response map on our HFD website at fire.honolulu.gov. Under the news and info tab, should you have any questions, please email the HFD's Public Affairs and Media Liaison. Incident statistics for October 2024. Fires, structure fires, one. Wildland brush fires, zero. Nuisance fires, five. Cooking fires, zero. Activated alarms, no fire, seven. Emergencies, medical, one hundred twenty-nine. Motor vehicle collisions with pedestrian, one. Motor vehicle crash with collision, ten. Mountain rescues, one. Ocean rescues, zero. Hazardous materials incidents, two. Nuisance fires include rubbish fires outside a structure or vehicle. The fire safety tips for this month include kitchen and cooking safety. Cooking is the leading cause of home fires. Protect yourself, your family, and your neighborhood by practicing these prevention tips. For more information and resources, visit fire.honolulu.gov. Stay in the kitchen while you are cooking. Do not leave cooking unattended. If you must leave the kitchen, turn off the stove. Keep items such as oven mitts, wood utensils, towels away from the stove top, even when the stove is off. Never store items on top of the stove or cooktop inside the oven. Keep a lid nearby to smother grease fires. Smother the fire by sliding a lid over the pan and turning the stove off. Only plug one heating appliance such as coffee maker toaster into an outlet at a time. Create a three-foot child and pet-free zone in your cooking area. And with no further questions, that is HFD's monthly reports.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any questions for HFD Board? And nothing heard. Community, any questions for HFD? Okay, nothing heard. Thank you, sir, for your report.
You have a splendid night, all. Take care.
Stay safe. All right, Honolulu Police Department?
Hi, Lieutenant Kiony Hong. Going over the stats for month of October compared to September. Motor vehicle thefts, there were twelve compared to five. Burglaries, four compared to five. Thefts, there were twenty-five compared to twenty-four. And car break-ins, there were twelve compared to nineteen. In the month of October, there were one thousand four hundred thirty-nine calls for service compared to one thousand three hundred thirty-four. Regarding the motor vehicle thefts, the jump from five in September to twelve, I looked at most of the reports. The, there were two that suspects were known, so family members or friends took the car without permission. Five, the keys were left in the vehicle. Some were like running into 7-Eleven, left the car running, and then somebody stole the vehicle. One, a relative saw the vehicle being towed, so it might have been a repo. One was a burglary of a state facility in which they took the keys and took a state vehicle. And then, I believe, two were mopeds and one was a motorcycle. There was a burglary, a second arrest that I wanted to highlight. It occurred on October 12, 2024, at zero three thirty hours at the Pro Ridge Shopping Center, Seed City. A thirty-five-year-old male was arrested who had eight prior arrests, five of them being felonies. Four were felonies committed this year. Those felonies were for theft, driving a stolen vehicle, drugs, and firing a rifle in public. The synopsis for this, this current incident was Seed City had a notification on their surveillance system which depicted a suspect in their kiosk rummaging through the cash register. Pro Ridge security was notified and found the male walking toward the exit near Macy's. Police were caught and were able to detain the suspect in the Macy's parking lot. The suspect had over eight hundred dollars worth of money and goods in his possession, which were stolen from the Seed City kiosk. The suspect was subsequently arrested. Because it happened at three thirty in the morning, they weren't sure how he got into Pro Ridge as it being closed. But later in the day, they noticed a door that was broken into on the second level. They reviewed surveillance and saw the suspect walking through the mall and entering the Seed City kiosk. So in this case, having surveillance and alarm systems helped with the apprehension of this suspect. Just following up on last month's meeting, there was a request for enforcement near the area of Ulunay Street and Halawa Valley Street for the illegal U-turns in the area of that freeway on ramp. So the solo bikes, with the help of Captain Michael Campbell, who I contacted, were able to go out there between October thirteenth and October twenty-sixth. Prohibited turn at intersection, they issued thirty-two citations. And for miscellaneous citations, they issued twenty-six citations. So if there are any other questions for this month, I'm available.
Okay. Board members? How, I do have one question. How's the? So they're still racing at midnight to like two in the morning on Saturdays down H1? How's the enforcement of that? You know, have you guys caught folks doing that?
Yeah, so at another board meeting, there was a similar request. And it encompasses pretty much our whole district. So they did make two racing arrests and then numerous citations, I know. And then the traffic division, at that time, they were kind of busy in District Eight, Y9. So they're aware of it as well. But yeah, the patrol units did make a couple of arrests, I believe it was last month, when it was brought up, I think, at the Pro City Neighborhood Board or one of the other neighborhood boards.
Okay, Roger. Okay.
Thank you.
Meeting members, any questions for HFD? Okay, nothing hurt. All right, LT, thank you so much for your report. Really appreciate it. Hey, Board of Water Supply? Yes, please.
Sorry. Good evening, Chair Wood, members of the IA neighborhood board and members of the community. I'm Tracy Burgo with the Board of Water Supply with your monthly report. I promise I'll make it fast. There were two main breaks reported in this neighborhood board district last month. There was an eight-inch main break on Aka Aka Street and a twelve-inch main break up at IA Heights Drive. As far as general water announcements, we are recruiting. We, so shape your future and become part of a dynamic and well-run city organization that protects Oahu's precious water resources, promotes your growth as an employee, and supports your work-life balance. The Board of Water Supply is looking to fill permanent full-time positions in engineering, information technology, customer care, and administrative support. There's also contract positions that are also available. So to apply, visit www boardofwatersupply.com/jobs/featured hashtag BWS. And it's in the report. I know it's a long URL, but it's in the report. So we'd like to encourage people to join the Board of Water Supply and become a water protector. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Board of Water Supply? Board members? Hey, meeting members, any questions for the Board of Water Supply? Okay, nothing heard. Thank you. Thank you, Tracy.
Thanks for your kind attention.
All right, Hawaiian Electric?
Aloha.
Aloha.
Chair Wood, neighborhood board leaders and community members. My name is Rob Tanak, and I'm representing the community relations team from Hawaiian Electric Company. Thank you for the invitation and for the opportunity to provide a few updates on behalf of Hawaiian Electric. The first update relates to a community concern regarding a pole near 99143 Manolo Road. So in response, our crews performed a field check of the area last Thursday, November 7, and identified the pole of concern. And the next step in the process is for our partners, Hawaiian Telcom, to complete their relocation of facilities and equipment to the neighboring pole which was newly installed. And once that step is completed, the old pole will be removed. Going forward, we will work closely with our partner, and I'll be happy to keep the board apprised of the removal status of the original pole. The second update I would like to provide relates to an inquiry regarding to an outage which occurred on October 30 and impacted roughly twenty-nine hundred customers in the IA community. And first off, I'd like to acknowledge and apologize for any outages. We recognize that it creates significant frustration and inconvenience to the community members, so we apologize for that. But going back to the October 30 outage, there were actually two events which occurred in parallel on that day and resulted in the outage being more widespread. According to our investigation, one outage was due to an underground cable fault that services the area. In addition, there were vegetation contacting our lines on that day. In both cases, crews were able to address and remedy the issues identified. But again, we sincerely apologize for any inconvenience that these outages may have caused. In taking a closer look at the broader IA community, I wanted to share that there are a few areas we are closely monitoring from a reliability perspective. The first area is in the Pro Ridge area, which experienced more frequent outages in the first half of this year. Since then, I'm happy to report that our crews have been able to complete a few projects in the area, which has improved the performance and reliability of the Pro Ridge community. The second area we are closely monitoring is in the Newtown area. And if I understand correctly, there was a recent outage this Saturday. Our engineers are working to determine the exact locations of recent underground cable faults and will be designing a project to replace faulty cables with new cables to help reduce the frequency of outages. However, due to the engineering, planning, and permitting required for a project of this scope, I do not have an exact timeframe for yet this moment, but I would be happy to keep the board apprised of any future projects scheduled going forward. This concludes my update to the board. Thank you again for the invitation to join in this evening, and I welcome any questions you may have.
Board members? All right.
For the outages, how was it for when they had an outage at face to the, I think, the, at Porridge?
At Porridge Mall?
Yes, all center have a duty, our outage hit in about thirty seconds or so of the parking that are. When I went back home, I, I found my place still out, I thought it's time supermarket, yeah, hour. As far as the power outage, it's targeting more residential customers. If you don't have resources to hire attorneys, you guys are keeping the big commercial customers online, but you have more sources.
So.
Never had our outage on my, our sheet was a roof sheet for the hospital. Never had. Now, as soon as we're getting outage, it's happening like about twelve rooms in one area. I'm wondering if the Board of Water Supply knows it's gonna happen outage.
Or Hawaiian Electric? Hawaiian Electric, yeah.
Guys know that you guys are gonna have an outage. Anyway, it appears the residents, it's up. So I have a CPAP machine, I have electronics, I can always switch off, I know.
Thank you for the question. If there are any planned outages, we will be sure to give you advance notice. Unfortunately, in those situations, I believe those are more unplanned outages that have occurred in your community. But if it, if it is a planned outage due to construction work in that area, we will give you advance notice.
Far as the duty at Porridge, I assume that my park because it's by the hospital, that side has.
Yeah, I'll need to take a closer look at that, but being, you are correct that hospitals are configured to ensure that they have backup generation and fed by multiple circuits to ensure that they have power.
I'm kind of concerned because whenever we have outage, it seems like it hits the residential side. It doesn't hit your big commercial company, because they have resources where they can take action, their attorneys. The residents, you don't have resources to do that. When I read about the China Town incident, you guys are not even here first to the guys what they lost. Small percentage on the news is, well, if you guys want to collect more, you guys had a hard period. Yes, that's not right.
No, thank you for the feedback.
Board members, any other questions? Yeah, so just to my two cents here, the Newtown, so I have a Ring camera at home, and the Ring group is constantly updating about the Newtown outage. Like, there, you know, so, so I know that the residents, at least those who have Ring cameras, are talking in between themselves about that outage in Newtown.
No, thank you for the feedback. And that is the area that, as I mentioned, a circuit that we are closely monitoring and we are aware of.
All right. All right. Meeting members, any questions for you? Hawaiian Electric? Anybody online for this? Okay. Thank you, sir, for your report.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Stadium Authority, Chris?
Aloha Chair Wood, members of the board, including former Chair Clark and members of the community. I'm Chris Kinimaka on behalf of the Department of Accounting and General Services and the Stadium Authority. And for the new Aloha Stadium Entertainment District, we had one major announcement that we released this past Halloween. And that's that the Aloha Halawa District Partners has been approved as our preferred offer and can now move into our eight-month diligence and discussion phase to finalize negotiations for a range of technical and other matters to further ensure that they meet the full requirements of our defined standards before we finalize the final agreement and sign off. These standards do reflect value for money for the state. This phase does also include outreach by HDP with the surrounding community and other key stakeholders to present further details of its proposal and to gather your feedback. So we do anticipate first indications of their concepts to be a welcome Christmas gift this year to the public with more active community engagement starting in the new year. So look forward to that. We look forward to your full participation as well. The final execution of the agreement is still on track for the summer of 2025 so that we are anticipating opening the new Aloha Stadium in time for the UH 2028 football season. Our outreach efforts culminated in a newsletter also released on Halloween Day. So if you look for more information or these newsletters, please come to our nasah.hawai.gov website. And I'll quickly tag Samantha Spain to let you know the latest events at the stadium. Sam?
Thanks, Chris. All right, good evening, everyone. Quick updates, really fast. We do have two events coming up this weekend. We have our first event on Friday, the fifteenth. This is our TMR Major Raja event. So these are all local groups. It is, again, with partnership with TMR events, so it will be in the same location, the same setup that we have done this past two years. We do anticipate the crowd to be the past Major Raja events that we had this past July 2024. So parking will open at 3:00 PM. It is a nine-dollar rate per car. We have all the information on the Know Before You Go guidelines on our website. And then I can confirm Skyline will not be extending their hours for this event just because it is a little bit smaller event. Following the Friday event, we do have Saturday. We have two events that we're actually doing. So the swap meet has recently started our Ho'opu'ahale entertainment area. So we do have local artists that are kind of up and coming. So we do have Noah Hull, which is performing from 12 to 1:00. So if you're hitting the swap meet this weekend, feel free to stop by and relax and listen to some music at our food court area then. And then also on Saturday, the sixteenth, again with TMR event, we do have Little Wayne. So we do anticipate a similar crowd to our last event that we did with TMR for mainland artists, like T-Pain, that was back in July. It's a little bit smaller than our normal Major Raja. So we are kind of adjusting same layout, same timeframe of ending at 10:00 PM. Parking will open at 3:00, doors open at 5:00. All the information is on the website. And then also confirming Skyline will not be extending their hours for this event. And I will turn it back to Chris or anyone, if anyone has any questions.
Thank, uh, thank you. Board members, any questions for Stadium Authority? Nothing heard. Meeting members, any questions for Stadium Authority? Okay, nothing heard. Thank you both for your reports. Much appreciated.
Mahalo.
Hey, O-triple-C?
All right, good evening, Chair Wood, members of the board, members of the community. I'm Bettina Maynard from IA. Here on behalf of the O-triple-C design team. I am joined by John Shell, O-triple-C's warden. Tonight, I'm giving a brief aid assisted by Chris Gadoch from our firm, who ensures that I don't have technical issues like last month's for which I want to apologize. Next slide, here's a list of some of the recent events. Uh-oh, maybe he has, there we go. List of the most recent events, the program and planning effort, continue with the program verification process. That is simply to make sure that the spaces we are meeting the needs of a modern facility. Other than that, a particular relevance is the value for money analysis. More on this in a minute. Next slide. You should have received our newsletter about two weeks ago, number fifty-five. It emphasizes a report on the team's attendance at the National ACA Conference. That's the American Correctional Association. We are currently preparing for the team's attendance at the upcoming ACA conference in January. So we look forward to continuing that momentum we've been building since the Nashville conference. Next slide, please. This here is newsletter fifty-six. It's a sneak peek of what I hope you will find in your inbox later this week. It features the dedication ceremony held at the W, what, at the Women's Community Correctional Center, W-triple-C. That's harder to say than O-triple-C. That facility has new administrative intake and visitation and housing buildings. This is very important to our project as W-triple-C will house the women that are currently at O-triple-C. This newsletter also reminds us about the differences between jails. Next slide, please. We submitted, and I think here is where I had my big technical difficulties, last month's, the final draft of the value-for-money report. And this report looks at quantifying and qualifying merits of proceeding with, on this project with a P3, a public-private partnership. And that is a fairly complex analysis. And in essence, it compares a conventional delivery project to P3. So for example, it considers, considers the cost of maintaining the facility over time, which is important. It compares the overall investment against having outside investors finance. So big, big conversation. And it evaluates building and maintaining the facility for us. So very relevant. Next slide, please. You may have seen the Star Advertisers front page in the Sunday paper in late October. It featured an article about the O-triple-C project. It was very well researched and included a, a number of different voices. If anybody's interested, I can share PDF after this here. Two days after this article was published, the advertiser had a reader poll, poll? Poll, huh? Do you support a renewed push? O-triple-C, O-triple-C jail? There were three options to choose from. One, yes, because O-triple-C is old and dangerous and it needs to be replaced. B, no, we can't afford $280 million initial outlay. And C, mixed, but open to hearing more. By a very large margin, the community or the readers selected option A, yes, the facility as it currently is, it's old and it's out there, it's dangerous and it needs to be replaced. Lastly, next slide, here's a reminder of our timeline, major milestones indicated. That little red rectangle is where we currently are. As we're moving forward in session, this project needs continued broad support. And I wanted to point that out here because that includes the current administration, the legislature itself, and the community. We, the team as a whole, anticipates asking for funding for AG and O-triple, for, for the animal quarantine station and O-triple-C in accordance with the schedule here. That is our presentation for today. Thank you very much, Chris, for keeping us flawless. And are there any questions?
Okay, board members, any questions for O-triple-C? Okay, I have, Warden, are you on?
I don't think he's on. I, I didn't see him. Supposed to be here. He might, he's not in the audience. It's hard for me to tell.
No, he's not here either. Okay. Oh, wow. Jeez, that was, okay. Maybe, maybe you might know. Do you know how much participation from other boards on the island have been touring O-triple-C?
How much participation on other neighborhood boards?
Uh-huh.
You are our main, you are our main board that we are presenting to.
So what, what, what I did, what I did was, was I sent out, I basically did a report on our tour of O-triple-C when the Warden, yeah. And, and then I sent it out to all the other neighborhood boards on the island and asked them to participate, to get with the Warden and schedule a time for them to participate in a tour of that facility. And I'm just curious from the Warden, how much, you know, how much, you know, engagement did he get from other board members to do that?
I don't know. And sorry, I misunderstood the question originally.
Yeah.
If there's anybody else from DCR on this call, maybe they can answer. I do not know.
Okay. Would that be something you could find out and bring back to us next board meeting in January?
Yes, of course.
Okay. One other, one other, one other question I have. On your report, I didn't see anything about the transition centers that you're, that we've been talking about. That is one of our constituencies, major issues with the O-triple-C being built in Halawa. So going forward on your reports, I'm going to literally ask you every, every time you come to this board meeting, I'm going to ask you about that transition center and what's the plan?
I will include it in my, in my next update, in our next update.
Appreciate that.
Sorry, I'm not ignoring you.
No, I know you're not. I know, I know. But just going forward, that will literally be a question I'm going to ask every board meeting. Because that is the number one issue with the O-triple-C being built in Halawa. Because that is the number one issue with the OCCC being built in Halaava is those transition centers and how those individuals that are transitioning from incarceration to the public life, how are they gonna be managed?
Question, I will have an update at the next board meeting. Thank you for asking.
All right. Thank you. Okay, community members, any questions for OCCC? Okay, nothing heard. All right. Thank you for your report. Much appreciated.
Of course. Thank you.
Pearl Ridge.
Chair Wood, board members, good evening. Five new stores opened at Pearl Ridge Center. Kiki Kingdom opened October 19th in our former Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. Lex Breezy opened their third store on the islands of Oahu on October 12th. Go Calendar Games and Toys opened October 16th in our by building. They are in a 5,000 square foot space. Kawaiie Corner recently opened on November 1st in our Maka Building and Reflections Hair Salon opened October 26th in our by building. Pearl Ridge Holiday, Express Holiday Train is back again this year. Will operate November 22nd through January 5th. Photos with Santa begins Friday, November 29th and continues through Tuesday, December 24th. You could also get a picture with your favorite pet. Paws with claws will occur on Wednesday, December 4th, 11th, and 18th from 4:00 P.M. to 6:00 P.M. And I've got the holiday hours there. And just to note, Black Friday hours at Pearl Ridge will be 9:00 A.M. to 9:00 P.M. this year. And we do have an event, La Llamadei is a, is an event where we'll be raising donations and cash equivalents for struggling local families in our community. And finally, Christmas Lodge is a pop-up. One-month pop-up in the former Chili's. They will be serving holiday-inspired specialty drinks and they open on December 1st. At the bottom, I have a scan code that will take you to our pearl ridge online.com website. Thank you. Questions?
Board members, any questions for Pearl Ridge? I have a couple. So Kiki Kingdom, how's the participation been going on that?
They are 50% above their, where they plan to be as far as activity. Don't, but don't do the trampoline. Trust me, I tried it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was kind of sore the next day.
All right. Well, that's outstanding to hear because I'm going to ask you about the Sears. How's that going? Still nothing. Okay. And I noticed on the Chili's that you have a one-month pop-up. What's that about?
Yeah, so it's a one-month, it's like a holiday, Christmas-themed bar. You may have seen them at Alamoana Center and in town, the same operators. So they are basically doing the same thing at our Chili's for one month, for the month of December.
Okay, so the whole Chili's is like a whole bar, basically?
Yeah.
What it'll be?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Live music, things like that, or?
Primarily just the
Just the drinks.
Just the drinks.
Okay.
Drinks out of ceramic Santa Clauses and things like that. Yeah.
Okay, okay. And last question I have for you. The Village Market, have you been receiving any complaints, noise complaints, or any? Nothing?
No.
We haven't heard anything, at least I haven't.
No.
Okay, great. All right. All right. Community members, any questions for Pearl Ridge Shopping Center? Okay, nothing heard.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving. Hey. Navy, DOD. Lydia, hi. How are you?
Good evening, Chair Wood, board, and those attending and those online. Welcome back. Hopefully, you're feeling better, Chair Wood.
Yeah. A little me time.
All right. That's a good thing. Got to bounce it out. We sent the report, so you all should have it. I'll just hit a couple of highlights. Stephanie will have some highlights and then Vic will wrap it up. First of all, the molelo, we brought a copy of that. We've gotten some great feedback on that. So please feel free to take a copy that's there and it's on our website as well. Now, we highlight some interesting items, including from the windward side, there were some seahorses found in the new Upea Fish Pond at the Marine Corps Base. So just some really interesting work that's going on with partnerships and a lot of other great stories there. We are doing hiring. We have a LinkedIn page, so we encourage folks to be checking there. We put out information on our hiring fairs as well. And as always, don't hesitate to reach out if you have a question on a specific item that you might see. And then my final item is called LoLima Navy. We started this on the Navy's birthday this year. We're leading up to the Navy's 250th birthday in October of 2025. And we are looking to document 250 acts of community service that the Navy is doing on island. A lot of things are already happening from donating blood to volunteering at places at regular cleanups. We had 100 folks at the Bike Path cleanup in mid-October. Four of us were up in Haiku Valley on Sunday. We've got more going up on the horse Sunday, working with Kohlau Foundation on invasive species removal. So if you know of an event that you would like to have volunteers for, you can send it to me. We'll advertise it to our network. And again, the goal is just to highlight existing community service, but then provide opportunities for others who want to get involved. And then I'm going to turn it over to Stephanie.
Good evening, Chair Wood, committee members and board members. We have the decommissioning dashboard that was just added to the NCTF app. And that provides information on sludge and residual fuel removal, tank cleaning, and air quality monitoring. And so if you don't have the app, you can go to the Apple Store or Google Play and type in NCTF and the app will pop up and you can download it for your phone. We also have our Let's Talk Red Hill podcast. It's a weekly series on the latest updates and insights regarding the Navy's progress in closing the facility. And usually it is posted every Thursday. I also want to encourage folks to go to the open house coming up this Thursday, November 14th, from 5:00 to 7:00 P.M. at the Hokulani Community Center, which is right outside of the base on 298 Main Street. You don't need a military ID to attend. Public is welcome. And our commander and deputy commander, both admirals, will be there along with our subject matter experts to talk about our facility and the environmental actions we are taking. So highly encourage you. And so if you have questions tonight as well, you can probably have them answered this Thursday by our subject matter experts if you attend. Thank you.
Board members, any questions for Navy? Sorry.
It's okay. The story of my life. Victor Flynn, Naval Facilities. Our Hurricanese drills, hurricane season is between June and November. November's wrapping up. We dodged a few bullets, but Navy is always ready to assist if and when we get the call. The Restoration Advisory Board, the next meeting is December 11th at the Oahu Veteran Center. An update on Dry Dock 5. We're moving forward. We just got completed the second major pour of our dry dock floor units, be the new Dry Dock 5. This would be the second of nine pours that we're doing. And so we're still moving forward on schedule, looking at the completion date sometime in 2028. That's all I have. Are there any questions for myself or my colleagues?
All right, board members. Lawrence.
Also, the Navy was trying to bring the well back online to Halaava well. I was wondering what's the status of that because as I was mentioning to the Navy, they're going to take five years or 10 years or 15 years to bring the well back online. Any well that's contaminated now, the W R as well, they're going to take a few months. I'm wondering if the Navy can take the lead if they have more resources. Try and bring that well back online. You got to put it on filters. What have you got? Show us how you do it. Bring it on as soon as possible. All the wells that are contaminated now, we know what kind of factors we're looking at. Right now, we've five years out, still a well in this town. We're going to take 10 years, 20 years to bring it back online.
Good question. I don't have the answer on how long it'll take. I know that there's regular monitoring going on and we wouldn't reopen anything without working with the regulators. We've got EPA here tonight, the DOH as well. But let me ask the question on if there's a timeline. And again, I'll get that back to you even before the December meeting.
Thank you. Benny?
Microphone, please. I can't hear.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
There was a press release that came out on October 16th regarding the Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hickam Waterline. And just the question is, why was there no mention of TPH or PFOS contaminants? In that, essentially, it was a sharp press release that said it determined that the water remains safe for consumption. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
And we post all the results on Safe Waters. We continue doing the testing even after the original long-term monitoring. So without detections, that's why they're saying that it meets the standards. And all these tests are run through the, through the regulators.
So you're saying there's no detection or it meets the standards?
Saying it meets the standards, but all the results of the tests are posted on safewaters.org.
Okay.
And I feel like I'm missing.
No, I feel like there were detections for both. So that's, that's my question for the follow-up.
Either at open houses or in press releases or Q&amp;A sessions. But if there's some specific afterward, we can talk.
I think there's just a discrepancy between the community and what the, some of the community and some of the affected families are reporting and what the Navy is coming back with and determining that it's safe. And so that's just the issue that I'm raising.
And I guess I would just reiterate that it's not just the Navy that's saying that the water meets the standards because the water goes to EPA-certified labs. The results go through DOH and EPA. So it's a looking at the science that this is, this is what the results are. I'm not a water expert, but that's
Thank you.
Hey, Lawrence.
Microphone?
Sorry. Yeah, the way they test the water at the residences' homes, they actually run the water for a certain amount of time, maybe 10, 15 minutes to flush it through. But as I mentioned before, normally people in Hawaii, you put your cup under the tap, you take the water, you drink it. But the way the EPA is doing it is not actual life scenario, actual life condition. If everybody were to run their water 10, 15 minutes and then take their sample, take their cup of water, I'm sure that they'll be using more than excess amount of water. So as far as a real-life test, that's the thing that you got to let the customers know. They got to flush their water 10, 15 minutes before they actually drink it. Should just let the residences know in the affected areas because their pipes are probably still as residual on the pipe inside. And what the EPA is doing is they're following EPA standards. So they're running the water a certain amount of time before they take their sample.
Right. Yeah, the sampling that's being done, they follow those standards also because sometimes there could be residue. So we have a whole bunch of information on Safe Waters on why the testing results happen the way they do in the whole process.
I'd real like to talk to you.
I keep on looking over EPA. I don't know if they wanted to say something.
So the running of the water is the standard drinking water protocol that's followed pretty much nationally. And it's meant, and it's written into the regulations in terms of what we are able to sample for in drinking water across the country.
Yeah, give you an example. I'm a very old person. And way back when, we have galvanized pipes. The galvanized pipes rusted. It created this brown haze in the water. People would drink that as soon as it came out of the tap. They would run it until the water was clear. With whatever contaminants are in there now, you cannot see what's in the water now because it's clear. That's the issue. So if you guys have that contaminant level in those homes already, you should give a directive to whoever's living there before they drink it or use it. You run the tap a certain amount of time like how the EPA tested.
Yeah, we've heard that feedback before in terms of giving, getting that, giving that feedback. Thank you.
So Lawrence, basically all you're asking for is this notification, right? Yeah, yeah, I get that. I get that. You're just saying you want the residents to be notified that, hey, run your water for a few minutes before you get a glass of water.
I would just add that we'll, at the open house on Thursday, they're going to have people at different stations that can talk to you about the drinking water also. So unfortunately, we, we can't speak specifically on the water quality questions that you have. But there'll be people there who could answer your questions if you have some on that. But I just keep saying that according to the tests that we're running, but we're continuing to run them and we're asking the questions or running through science. We have teams looking through different potential issues to make sure that we're addressing it.
Okay. All right, board members, any other questions for Navy?
Chair.
Go ahead, Francie.
Lydia, we are recessing in December, so January 14th is our next meeting.
Yep. Okay. Anything else, Francie?
That's all.
Okay, thank you. All right. Community members, any questions for Navy? Okay. Before we drop off of this, I saw the commanders' major goals for this coming year. And Red Hill is definitely one of those major goals, right next to like partner engagement and you know, keeping the shipping lanes open, right? So, so I appreciate that. I saw that as part of the major goals for Endo Paycom for this year. So thank you. Okay. All right, thank you, Paul. All right, Mayor's Office.
Good evening, Chair Wood. Just making sure you guys can hear me.
I can hear you.
Good evening, Chair Wood, members of the board and the community. Haku Mills, Director for the Department of Design and Construction. I'll try to keep this quick. Some quick highlights on Mayor's Newsletter. More information on the city's proposal to raise sewer fees for the first time since 2016. I understand Envy and Dr. Babcock is making a presentation this evening. Recapping the incredible Pride Month in Honolulu, including Mayor's appearance at the Pride Parade. Details on the updated flood maps from FEMA and what it could mean for homeowners. The remarkable true story of an open ocean rescue featuring an Oahu student athlete and 61st responders. And a popular park and baseball field in Waipahu opens after $4 million in repairs and upgrades. The November 2024 edition of the Mayor's Newsletter can be found online at ho.gov/mayor/newsletter. I'll put the link in the chat. Neighborhood Plan Review. The Neighborhood Commission's Neighborhood Plan Committee began meeting to conduct comprehensive review of the neighborhood plan. A presentation with more information is available on your board's Google Drive. Committee currently meets on the third Monday of every month at 6:00 P.M. If you have any questions, please contact the Neighborhood Commission office. Some issues and follow-ups. There was inquiry about the three-story building project at 99-230 Monaloo Road. Several board members and residents raised traffic concerns. There were questions for DPP and DTS. Can DPP provide an update and information about the building permits? And for DTS, how will the bus stop be impacted? And what about potential safety improvements on Monaloo Road? DTS responded that the traffic, I'm sorry, the site plans for the project were reviewed and staff concluded the bus stop at Monaloo Road and Iya Heights Drive, number 1878, which fronts this property, will not be impacted during construction. During construction, any work phase requiring a temporary relocation of the bus stop will be included in the project's traffic control plans that the contractor submits for DTS review and approval. In addition to the TCP traffic control plan, the contractors are required to notify DTS and Oahu Transit Services by phone or email for any work impacting the bus operations or out stops no less than 30 days prior to the start date. For DPP regarding the permit, building permits, on October 29th, the building, sorry, Building Inspection Section of DPP conducted an investigation and revealed three active building permits by this property owner. Building permit number 845416 was issued in February 2020 for a retaining wall. This included grading work and site prep. Construction was not yet started. Another building permit, 902500, was issued December 23 for site work related to building permit number 902501, both regarding a new three-story commercial building. At this time, all construction work is following the approved plans under those building permit numbers. No building code violations were observed at this time. They will continue to monitor this project under construction until it's completed and verify the compliance of the building code and land use ordinances. Next issue. Next issue was Kamameha Highway and Kanuku Street. This is for DTS. Can DTS improve the timing of the left turn traffic light at the intersection? A DTS has been monitoring the left turn from Kamameha Highway eastbound and found that vehicles waiting in a left turn lane are able to complete the left turn with the green signal. For DPR, there was a question of baseball field C at Halava District Park. Can DPR skin the baseball field C at Halava District Park? The residents said that C field at Halava District Park is not playable. DPR replied, "Thank you for informing us about the unplayable field conditions at Halava District Park. We are coordinating with the Maintenance Support Services Division to have the field resurfaced and restored to playable condition by December 20th, 2024." Another inquiry for DTS traffic study on Aia Heights Drive. Could a traffic study be conducted near 98-1065 Kamilo Street? There was a letter submitted to Chair Wood. And they'll be conducting an investigation which may require research and inspections, traffic surveys, and they would update the board once the investigation is completed. Another inquiry for DTS was signage. Kalalua Street and Salt Lake Boulevard, a resident raised concerns about the lack of adequate signage at that intersection and that it was confusing. Request for DTS to take a look and determine if more signage was necessary. DTS completed their investigation of the board's request. Their investigation inspection confirmed that there is sufficient signage with the subject intersection. However, multiple faded signs were observed along Salt Lake Boulevard. With regards to the traffic signal lights at the intersection, DTS did not observe any instances of motorists being confused of the traffic signals at the time of their investigation. DTS is currently in the process of evaluating the intersection for a dedicated left turn signal. Once the evaluation is completed, it will notify board of their results. It looks like they might see. Yeah, there's some issue. There's some information missing on my paper. So regarding the faded signs, as such, a work order has been issued to DFM, Department of Facilities Maintenance, to replace the faded signs in this area. For status updates regarding this order, it's a Paint and Sign Work Order, PSW034701. Please contact DFM at 808-768-3622. Those are the issues and that is my report, but I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
All right, board members, any questions for the Mayor's Office?
I just have a minor.
Go ahead.
You just. On Aia Heights Drive, up at the top of the hill near that dip in the road, there's a street light that's not working. The phone number is 13-423.
Noted. We will take a look at that. Thank you for letting us know.
Board members, any other questions? Hey Haku, I put in a ticket. The ticket number is, oh, I'm sorry, somebody else, somebody else had a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to. Thank you for the fixing the light. So far, I haven't had any problems at Kanuku. The left turn.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, I had a question.
Oh, go ahead.
I had a question. There's new construction going on on Lake Street. It looks like two single-family homes on one lot. What's, what's the legal authority for that?
Yeah, so.
It's not one, it's not one structure.
That's something we can put in with DPP. Depending on the size of a lot, it is possible to put two homes based on the zoning, but I'll have to get the actual address and reach out to DPP.
I don't have the address, but it's the, it's on Uluni. It's a brand-new construction going.
Okay, we'll see. We'll see if we can find out.
Okay. Any other questions, board members? Okay, Haku? I put in a ticket. Ticket number is 4641681. It's a clear storm drain. There's overgrowth in front of it. And I think I put in about two months ago.
Okay. You said 4641681?
That's correct.
Okay, I'll check in with DFM.
All right. And then on Salt Lake Boulevard, across from the stadium, just past Kalalua Street, as you're heading towards the transit, you know, there's a, there's a wall of like cinder block that's, there's houses along there. And then there's like walls of cinder block. Some of them have cinder block. One of those walls is kind of precariously leaning over into the sidewalk. I think it's about to fall at any moment. And I think that's a homeowner's responsibility, not the city's, but you might want to have the city come out, go out there and take a look at that.
Do you have the address by chance or can you email?
Yeah, I'm gonna email to you. I don't want to send it here. Or I'll tell you here. So.
Roger. Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. All right, community members, any questions for the Mayor's Office? Okay. Oh, Claire, go ahead. Sorry.
You mentioned the building on I, Honolulu Road that it met, there were some permits out. Is that all for that structure? So you said there was a structural permit that hasn't started work on yet, been started, a retaining wall?
Yeah, so there are three permits. One of them is for a retaining wall that had not yet been started. The other two are related to the three-story structure.
Can you tell me where the retaining wall is? Is that by the stream side or is that the street side? And is there a certain amount of setback from the road that has to, that has to be there between that and the bus stop? That's the closest structure there?
Yeah.
What kind of green spaces are we going to have there?
Yeah, so typically there is a setback requirement regarding the exact plans for that retaining wall. I don't, I don't have them. I can provide that information. But I, with the three-story structure that's being built at the property, that is something that DPP will be inspecting as they construct that facility.
Well, the, the building is pretty much up already. The outline of the building is all up. It has three stories, but it has also one and a half stories below the three stories for parking. So, yeah, they can continue to monitor that, that. And regarding the building on Honolulu Road, the house, the residential house, I think Councilmember Cordero has researched that. I think the building permit people have gone out there. It is okay because it's two separate structures and the separate structures itself meet code. It's not one big lad mask. But they were cited for something and I can't find the email that says what they were cited for. So you can follow up, I guess, on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no further questions. Haku, thank you for, for the report.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Okay. All right, moving on. Councilmember Cordero's office.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, this is Deana from Councilmember Radien Cordero's office. I just want to welcome, we have a new staff in our office and she's joining us tonight. Her name is Sheri May. She is our community, um, what is her title? One sec. Engagement Liaison. Hi Sheri, say hi.
Hi, everyone. Nice to meet you all and officially attend.
All right, on the chat, I sent our, the link to our monthly report. And we have a lot of updates this month and I just encourage everybody to check on our report for the detailed information of the constituent updates. I'm not going to go on it one by one. But first I want to start on the legislative updates. We received a lot of constituent concerns in the last two weeks about the fire code for fireworks. So I just want to provide a detailed update on that. So currently, the public use of fireworks on Oahu are banned, except firecrackers that are allowed on certain occasions with a permit. Originally passed by the council on October 9th, Bill 22 sought to amend the fire code to allow for the use of consumer fireworks, such as ground-level fountains and sparklers. However, the bill was vetoed by Mayor Blangardi and the action to override the veto to allow the bill to pass and become an ordinance was on the council agenda for consideration at its meeting last week, November 7. After much discussion and deliberation, and with the requirement that six votes are needed, the motion to override the veto failed, with a council vote of four in support and four opposed, with Council Tolba absent. During the meeting, council members voting against override noted that their respective constituencies citing health and safety concerns reached out to, to our office in strong opposition to allowing the bill to pass. And then moving on to community concerns, like I mentioned, there's a lot of detailed updates here and there's, I'm just gonna list them all. There is a response to the, there is a concern that we receive at Halava District Park and our office reported it to HPD and Department of Parks and Recreation. There's also feeding of feral animals on Ko'a Uka Street and Ko'a Uka Loop that was also reported. Ka'onohe Street Bus Stop, we contacted HPD on that and they did some checks on the homeless individual that's living at the bus stop. Another one is Ka'onohe Street and Mauanaluwa Road traffic signals. Now, for, DTS conducted an inspection on that and reported to our office that the signals are working as programmed. And then installation of shoulder slash parking lanes on Ka'amilo Street. Now, this is going to be installed. This is from Uluni to Kula Vai Street to narrow the travel lanes from 20 feet to 10 feet in each direction to help encourage speed compliance. Street parking will be retained. Another one is Uluni Street and Aia Heights Drive pedestrian crossing button. Our office checked that crossing button and they observed that it was working properly. Eva Eva Street and Place, HPD three patrol officer conducted an enforcement there regarding concern about speeding, increased HPD presence in Aia. We reported that to HPD as well. Traffic signal timing at Uluni Street and Kai Manani Street and Uluni Street and Ali Ipo'e Drive intersection. That's reported too. Details on our report if you're interested. And then Trees on Akaka Street was also reported to our Parks Division, Urban Forestry. There's also a concern about damage equipments, play apparatus equipments at Napa Anani Neighborhood Park that, that was submitted to DPR. And then noise and vehicle concerns on Kohumu'a and Kalalua Street and Makalapa Neighborhood Park. And then last month, there was, I believe, a board member, Lawrence Higa, raised a concern in last month's meeting about street sweepers leaving debris and gravel behind. I reported it to the Department of Facility Maintenance and I was told that typically they expect a 10-year lifespan for its street sweeping equipment. However, due to supply shortages, some equipment dating back to 2012 is still in use. The Department of Facility Maintenance will be conducting checks on equipment serving Mauanaluwa and Aia to ensure that they are functioning effectively. Their staff are trained to monitor whether debris is being left behind. So if you observe any uncollected debris, please report it to our office, including the date and time of occurrence, so we can notify the department for prompt action. Okay, for the fun part, we invite everyone to join us for the annual Honolulu City Lights starting in early December. This year, we're excited to showcase a fresh and dazzling display of Christmas decorations and lights picturing equipment from a show Aloha Lands Reon Christmas Light displays. Visitors can look forward to new and improved decoration that will fill Honolulu Halei grounds. That's all for my report tonight.
Okay, thank you so much. Board members, any questions for the council members' office? All right, community members, any questions? Okay, nothing hurt. Thank you so much for your report.
Thank you.
Councilmember Okimoto's office.
Oh yes, good evening. This is Aaron Wilson with the Office of Councilmember Okimoto. Aloha Chair, aloha board. Thanks for having me. The full council was blessed November, November 7th. It's the important resos and bills of note came out of that. The Councilmember's Resolution 24-242 urging the Hawaii State Legislature to enact legislation addressing the drastic increase in property insurance premiums took place. We're seeing a lot of increases in the associations based on the insurance, insurance premiums going up. Bill 44, CD2, is related to the traffic safety and traffic safety and establishing more appropriate speed limits. The council did have some reservations because the bill seemed to be too broad and it wasn't limited to specific areas around schools. And then the authorizing of overt video monitoring to ensure safe and secure Honolulu Marathon for 2024 also passed. Some bills of note that are coming up, Bill 59 is relating to plastic. It's addressing single-use plastic bottles in city facilities. And Bill 60 is amending the, the revised ordinances of Honolulu relating to sewer fees, drainage and cesspools. The council will wrap up its monthly business with the committee meetings on November 19th through the 21st, followed by full council meeting on Wednesday, December 11th. We had about four calls and emails coming from the Aia area. The constituent concerns consisted of speeding and noise on Ka'ama'no Street between the fire station and the top of the street. There was a three-year study that was conducted where the grading was considered too steep for speed humps. DTS has hired a traffic consultant and when preliminary designs are completed, they will present that to the community for ways to address the speeding in that area. I think everything was pretty much covered by my colleague there. So if you have any questions, I could take back. I'd be happy to.
Okay, board members, any questions? Mr. Higa?
I can't hear anything.
Microphone, please.
All right. As far as the sunshine law, I read somewhere that the sunshine law does not apply to the state legislatures, but it does apply to the neighborhood board meetings. At our next board meeting, can you summarize why it's not applicable to the state legislatures? Thank you.
You'd have to ask the, the state legislators. It applies to the city council as well. So the, it's my understanding that the, the state legislatures, when they enacted that law, they exempted themselves. We are under the same laws that you are as well in the city council.
Yeah, so my question is why?
Thank you. Okay, I'd be happy to get that information. Maybe one of our state legislators could answer that as well, who were here at the meetings. Thank you.
Would you be able to bring an answer back in January?
Sure, I can do that.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, board members, any other questions for the council members' office? Hey, community members, any questions? Okay, nothing hurt. All right, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
All right, Claire, ACA.
Wow, I'm so impressed.
It's moving along quickly.
Okay, so other than, well, there are a couple of things that the community association has been working on. I don't know if you know, if you're familiar with Bill 24, and it's, Bill 24 speaks to the, what's called the primary urban center, which Aia is a part of, part, half of Aia is a part of. We want, we're concerned about the language saying that they're going to infill some of the area right over here with housing or more populated housing and then lower along the shoreline with housing or apartment buildings. So what we've asked for, and Councilmember Cordero has been very supportive of including language. So what we've asked for is to prioritize and invest in bioculture restoration, native Hawaiian. Native Hawaiian Lo'i Kalo, Loko Ei Malia Mala in Lower Aia to foster community health and well-being through an adaptive adaptive strategy that addresses stormwater management and mitigates fire risks, flooding, urban heat, groundwater discharge recharge and other climate change shoreline impacts while also expanding access to the urban greenery and cultural restoration, food security and community stewardship. Part of the reason why we're saying that is I don't know how many of you are familiar with that Harbor Court area by where fabric mart is. It's standard if there's a high tide for the water to come up through the sewage. I mean, the, I mean, that, I mean, it floods constantly. So, you know, we had somebody here at the neighborhood board talking about doing a special department like the Board of Water to assess and to improve those storm drains. So we want to be able to preserve those properties without building construction on them and creating more of a tax, creating more of a tax on the area. So be aware of that. That's coming up and we'd like to ask you guys support for that. We also would like, the other support we'd like to ask or make you folks aware of is there are two Royal Palms in front of the Aia Post Office. They actually sit, they're over a hundred years old. They sit on federal land, actually. But because of the tall, high-rise building that's right next to the post office, there's limited parking on the street. And little cars park on that little green space. They hop, they jump that little berm and they park on that. We've been told that it's not so much the mufflers and everything that might hit the trees because there are scarring, there is scarring on the trees. But it's the cars being parked on the root system there that will kill those trees. So we're trying to see if we can get something in conjunction with the federal government to have people not park on that property. So I don't know if you guys got any ideas. I was gonna put a little thing around the tree and say, I know you don't know that you're hurting me and killing me. Anyway. Okay, so kind of keep that in mind and if you have any.
Would this be something we reach out to Mr. Case's office with? It's federal property. I don't know how to handle.
Well, the federal property said, I mean, the post office said they'll they'll be willing to. They agree with us, but they don't know how to enforce stopping that.
And that's not their job to enforce it either.
Right, so.
I mean, the only thing I could think of is put ballards up or something like that, that would.
Or put a big rock.
Yeah, rocks. Yeah.
All right, I just want, just want you guys to know about it. So the big thing for us is the upcoming parade and fair, Family Fun Fair on December fourteenth. We're gonna start from Prored Center again and come all the way to the site over here. We're working together with the blood bank again, having a blood drive. We're gonna have shot and flu COVID and flu clinics to for shots. It's gonna be informational booths. There are going to be twenty-five vendors. We've decided to limit it to twenty-five vendors. Free food trucks and some bouncers. So any support you can give us and I think Tracy just said you folks are gonna come and join us. The Neighborhood Board. Okay, did you work on your application? Did you submit your application too? Okay, we'll save you a spot. Yes. Any questions regarding? Yes.
With regard to the PUC, is there something specific that we could do as a board to support what you're doing or is it better for us as individuals to just approach?
There is probably something specific, but I, you know, we don't have it in writing. I don't have it to present to you folks today, so I would have to give it to you.
And what is the, because they're gonna vote on it in December already, yeah?
Well, it's been postponed a couple of times, so I don't know if it was postponed at the last hearing we submitted. I think the next meeting is Wednesday.
Yeah, the committee meeting, I think the committee is reconvening that this coming week and then they're supposed to, the council, the full council meeting is in December.
Yeah, except they've pushed back the agenda items. So we're hoping that well, maybe individually you can go and talk or send letters to Councilmember Cordero's office to support that. And we can show you some of the language, but our concern is that they're gonna.
Hi, it will be in the January meeting. Just by the way, the PUC DP legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so if we can maybe deal, do you know when, Dina, in January?
I don't have, hold on one moment. One second, I'm looking at my calendar.
Is it gonna be before neighborhood board meeting?
Sorry, we don't, I don't have my twenty twenty-five calendar yet, but I will inform the board next month.
All right, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, board members, any questions for ACA?
For the, for the Royal Palms, would, would some sort of like historic preservation, I know it's on the state level, but would that be helpful?
We've tried to contact some of them. We've tried to contact maybe some arborists that might be, help us lead that fight, I guess, but because it is on federal land, yeah, so we're trying to still do it anyway.
Okay, thank you. Community members, hold on. Community members, anything for ACA?
Yeah, I had a question for Claire.
Okay, go ahead.
Claire, you know, you mentioned the the planned urban plan that the council is pushing through.
Right.
And it's something about housing in Lower Aia, I'm assuming you mean Harbor Court area.
Initially, they were talking about saying that for to have additional infill housing at this Sugar Mill property. But I think the language has been recommended that they take that out.
When you say infill, what do you mean infill? What kind of housing?
Apartment sized houses. Right now, there is this Halei Ipoa, which is an eight-story building that sits right on the shoreline, not right on the shoreline, but it's the place where they had the. Yeah, Harbor Court.
Is it, is it consistent with the TOD zoning? Because they did a lot of TOD zoning.
Yeah, I know they did. I think the TOD, I don't think it's consistent. It might be height consistent with the TOD, but it's also then in contrary to the plans that were done by the Aia and ProCity Liverpool Communities Plan that address open shorelines. So, yeah.
So are you folks opposing?
I'm sorry.
Are you folks opposing it?
Sort of, yes.
Okay, Russell, any other questions?
No, I was just asking whether ACA is opposing the plan.
Yeah, we appeared, they had a community outreach meeting. I don't even know when that was, but it was the last minute they were announced it, this is a couple of months ago. They announced a community meeting that day. Lee Hawaii Civic Club went, I went and, you know, we had some, we expressed some concerns. And I think they felt that that was all they needed to do to meet their community outreach requirement and they went forward.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and move on. We'll go to the board business and presentations. So filling in the one vacant seat for Sub District Four, is there anybody interested in filling that vacant seat? Okay, nothing heard. All right, moving on. Motion to request the Neighborhood Commission to change the designation of the Sub District Four seat to an at-large seat for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five board term. Curtis, what is, what does that issue?
A board, a board member during last month's meeting asked if.
Right, we could change it to at-large.
Correct, so someone would have.
Have we met the maximum amount? I think there's a maximum amount we can only do at large, right? No, we could do as many as we want? Okay. Yeah, I know, right? So, okay, all right, great. Does somebody want to make a motion to make this position at large? Jane makes a motion. Anybody want a second? Okay, just open for discussion. Anybody? Yeah, go ahead, Danny.
Would that be a permanent move or just for the remainder of this term?
As stated on the agenda, just for the remainder of this term.
Correct, that's, yeah.
Okay. Right, so, so just to be clear, right, so it would be at large, but at the end of this term, which is, it would revert back. Okay? So, so whoever goes into that position, if they're not in Sub District Four come the end of this term, they will lose that position, right?
So you all have to run for reelection.
Yeah, okay, all right. Claire, go ahead.
You also have the option as a neighborhood board to ask to make more seats at large if you want to.
Yeah.
So this temporarily is a temporary fix.
Right.
But if going forward, you see yourself wanting to have more seats at large as opposed to by sub districts or, you know, some boards are all at large.
Right.
But the argument has been made by you folks that sometimes it's better to have people represent certain areas.
Right. Yeah, and then we, we, we actually kind of went down that road previously. So actually during the last election, we did that, right? Where we kind of made it half and half. So, okay, all right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor for this motion?
Aye.
Oh. Raise, raise a hand if you're in favor. If you're online, just say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, any objections? Raise your hand. Anything seen? Okay, so the motion passes to change the designation of one District Four seat to an at-large seat for just the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five board term.
That needs to be approved by the commission.
Right, okay. Which more likely will be. Okay, great. All right, let's move on. Approval of the written summary for the video record Tuesday, October eighth, twenty twenty-four. Anybody have any updates they want to make before the motion gets presented to approve? Okay, who wants to make a motion to approve the minutes for October eighth, twenty twenty-four? Jane makes a motion. Who wants a second? That's it? You'll second?
Oh, it's not required.
Okay, well, I guess it's not required. Okay, any objections to the approval of the minutes for October eighth, twenty twenty-four? Say aye or raise your, or say nay and raise your hand. No objections? Okay. Thank you. All right, motion is passed to approve the minutes for October eighth, twenty twenty-four. All right, moving on. All right, Board of Water Supply presentation. PHAs detected, I'm not even trying to say something, detected in BWS Ia wells. Polycyclic
aromatic hydrocarbons.
Aromatic, yes. Aroma aromatic, yes, sorry. Yep, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, everybody. Good evening, Chair Wood and members. Ernie Lau, manager for the Board of Water Supply. Just want to introduce some of the BWS team here tonight. You know Tracy Burgos, she does a good job with this neighborhood board. We also have Mr. Urin Kawata, our deputy manager. Kathleen Elliott Paihenui, head of our communication office, along with Stephen Nordstrom, also assisting me tonight. But we'll try to make this really quick. First of all, Steve, he can put it into, move on to the next slide, please. No, actually back to the map. Okay, oh, there's a, there's a delay. Okay, so look at on the map on your handout and folks in the audience, anybody need a handout? We have more copies on the table there. Kathleen will get you some copies. So this map is looking down at the Halawa Valley area. And I draw, just want to draw your attention to the center of the map. You see that outline in orange? Actually, that represents the Navy's property for the Red Hill Bulk Field Storage Facility. Remember, this was the built eighty years ago and nineteen, completed in nineteen forty-three. It's probably one of the largest on field constructed underground fuel storage tanks in the Department of Defense. At one time, this could store two hundred fifty million gallons of fuel. And the, the part that is that we're most concerned about it, it was the fact that this, these field tanks, which are about two hundred fifty feet tall, a hundred feet in diameter. The bottoms of those tanks, and they stand vertically, there are two rows of ten tanks. Two, twenty tanks in total. The bottoms of these tanks are only a hundred feet above the drinking water aquifer below. The groundwater that we depend on as a resource and also the Navy depends on as a resource. So outline in orange is that parcel, the blue dots in the two rows there represent the underground field storage tanks. The yellow dots and red dots represent monitor wells that have been installed by the Navy over the years since they first discovered, I think, that these tanks at least they disclosed to the Department of Health back in the nineteen nineties that these tanks were leaking. And they drilled these monitor wells and over time, I think there's almost thirty, thirty-eight or so monitor wells they installed. The yellow dots represent monitor wells. The red dots represent monitor wells where they also detected polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons at the Red Hill facility. PAH chemicals, polycyclic aromatic carb, hydrocarbons can come from petroleum, crude oil. That's one common source. Another source is when you burn something, you combust something, the residual can actually contain PAH chemicals. Now you look across Halawa Valley, you'll see Halawa Shaft, Aia Gault Wells, Aia Wells and Halawa Wells and Ka'amilo Wells. Those blue triangles represent the Board of Water Supply wells. I just want to say that the three wells that we shut down shortly after, about three years ago, there was a fuel spill right above Red Hill Shaft, the Navy's water source that provides about quarter of the water supply for Joint Base Par Harbor Hickam. That led to fuel contaminants being in the drinking water of the customers served by the Navy's water system for Joint Base Par Harbor Hickam. We shut down three wells. I shut down Halawa Shaft, Halawa Wells and Ia Wells. And they still remain shut down. We're not supplying our community with drinking water. To the left of it, you'll see NMW twenty-four. That's also another monitor well developed by the Navy. It's near Saint Elizabeth Church. So as you enter Monoloa, Aia from the Monoloa Road taking the off-ramp headed westbound, that monitor well is in that general vicinity there. It's a red dot because they also detected PAH chemicals at that location. Next, next slide. Sure. So that's a big question that there is still a lot of investigation that needs to happen. We've always suspected, and I've been working on the Red Hill issue since I first learned about the leak of twenty-seven thousand gallons from tank number five back in twenty fourteen. That the, the elevation of the groundwater table at the, where the field tanks are located, which are those blue dots outlined in orange, it's about eighteen, nineteen feet above sea level, the top of the aquifer. As you move more westward across Halawa Valley toward Aia Halawa, it drop, drops down to about fifteen point nine feet above sea level. So we know that water tends to flow from higher elevations to lower elevations. So the general, we think, the general flow direction is could be also westward and maybe even to the northwest, possibly across Halawa Valley. And that's a, Chair, that's a million-dollar question that still needs more investigation to prove it out. Chair, that's why I think where there is a subject of disagreement between us and the Navy and the regulators. If I could let me finish here. Okay, thank you. So the PAH detections was at NMW twenty-four. We also had a slight detection, a low-level detection in our Halawa Wells and also our Aia Wells. You can see them grouped kind of to the northwest of the Red Hill facility. Next table, next slide, please. So let me unpack this table. This is a lot of data here. And I hope that people on Zoom can also see this. But all the values in this data, it's basically test data from laboratory tests being done by the Board of Water Supply and also the Navy. So the values are in micrograms per liter or parts per billion. You see that in the upper left. Next line, where you see the word location on the left, you'll, if you look across on that row, you'll see Aia Wells, Navy NMW twenty-four, Navy Monitor Well number twenty-four. BWS DH forty-three, that's actually a monitor well located in Monoloa Valley. RH MW zero-two, zero-four, zero-six and Red Hill Shaft. Red Hill Monitor Wells two, four and six, and also Red Hill Shaft, which is their water source that is currently shut off. Then to the right of it, you'll see EPA MCL. Then to the right of it, you'll see EPA MCL. That is actually a EPA Drinking Water Standard, uh, National Primary Drinking Water Standard. And right now for the PH chemicals, they only regulate benzopyrene at point two parts per billion. So nothing above that level is allowed to be, uh, in drinking water. Uh, and then the last column on the very right of this table, you see DOH DW action limit. That's a Department of Health Drinking Water Action Limit. There's no drinking water standard, but they said drinking water action limits that would trigger cleanup, uh, in the environment. Then on the left, if you go back to the left side of this table, you'll see a list of different chemicals here. These are the PH chemicals that we are testing for. Uh, and then you'll see to the right of it, numbers, those are actually detection levels, the amounts detected in the samples taken on different dates. You'll see that, uh, Ia Wells, the sample date was June 4th, uh, 2024. EPA 525.2 and 625 are EPA laboratory methods used. So we follow EPA regulatory methods in the labs, uh, to run these, uh, these tests. Then the Navy's Monitor Well, uh, 24, NMW 24, taken on June 24, 20, uh, 2024. But one thing about this table is, there's a two-year, uh, almost two and a half year time difference. So all the test results for DH 43, uh, Red Hill Monitor Well Number 2, 4, 6, and Red Hill Shaft were taken actually about almost two and a half years ago. Remember the drinking water contamination event that contaminated the aquifer at Red Hill Shaft really heavily with petroleum contaminants? That occurred around November. It actually was, there was actually two events in November, uh, in, in May and November of 2021. Uh, so, but you can see, uh, in 2022, they detected PH chemicals at those locations. And then what we've done in this table, compared it with, uh, now two and a half years, three, almost three years later, the test results we have at our Ia Wells and the Navy's Monitor Well Number 24. So one thing I'd like to point out, if we go back to the map on the previous page, you'll see the Red Hill Field Tanks outlined in orange, that's the Navy parcel for the Red Hill Field Tank Facility. And it, our Ia Wells is about two miles to the northwest of this facility. So there's a kind of a time difference, so November, May, November of, and November of 2021 spills at Red Hill. Uh, JP, uh, JP 5, uh, JP 8, JP A Jet Propulsion Fuel 8. Uh, and also more, uh, what we suspect is older fuels that leaked in the past over the 80-year history were mobilized and moved into the groundwater and started to spread. Now, two, two and a half, three years later, we're now detecting it to the northwest. I want to be very clear, I'm not saying that there is 100% evidence that it's originated from the Red Hill Facility, but I just want to point out the observation, you have at the Red Hill Facility the largest underground fuel storaged tank facility that the DoD may have in the United States. Uh, it operated for 80 years, it suffered spills, it contaminated the water of Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hickam. Now about two and a half, three years later, we're finding it to the northwest. I'm just saying, I'm not ruling out the possibility that it could have originated from Red Hill. I'm not saying that there is a guarantee, but rather than dismissing Red Hill as a possible source, which was, is the largest fuel facility that's now, fortunately, I, I hallowed the Navy for defueling most of the fuel, taking over 104.7 million gallons out of there. Uh, but that is a strong suspect in my mind here. It can't be ruled out until more investigation is done. Next slide. So in yellow here, uh, go back to the table, just want to point out real quickly, really quickly, in yellow here, those represent the DOH Drinking Water Action Limits, where the detections at different monitor well locations actually exceeded the Department of Health's Drinking Water Action Limits. Notice that Ia Wells, the Board of Water Supply Ia Wells, which is shut down, detections at the, uh, for those four PH chemicals above the DOH Drinking Water Action Limit. But I also notice, uh, Navy Monitor Well 24 near St. Elizabeth's Church, detections for similar PH detections are also above the Drinking Water, DOH Drinking Water Action Limits. And then also in Monalua Valley, back in 2022, we found PH chemicals. And this DH 43 is probably only about 2,000 feet from Tank Number 20. In May of 2021, there was a pipe burst in the lower tunnel of the Red Hill Facility that maybe dumped, uh, maybe 20,000 gallons of JP 8 into the lower tunnel. Uh, then also the 2022 results for the different Navy Monitor Wells, including the Red Hill Shaft. And I'm just explaining the data as it stands. So we say that we, we need to look at this more closely, go on to the next slide, Stephen. So what does this mean? It reaffirms our concerns with past fuel releases from Red Hill and the impact to the aquifer and environment. And for now, until there is definitive information, uh, data collected in the field, and primarily a lot of it through more aggressive, a more thorough monitor well network, I'm not going to rule out that this didn't originate from Red Hill. I don't know for sure, but I'm not going to rule out that possibility. It reaffirms the decision to shut down three Board of Water Supply Wells, Halava Shaft, Ia Wells, and Halava Wells. And I'll just say to the board, when I made that decision shortly after Joint Base's water system was heavily contaminated and people are seeking medical attention, it was a tough decision because that means taking offline a lot of capacity for our communities in the Ia Halava community, and also in the Honolulu Metropolitan Water System. Halava Shaft serves the, uh, Metropolitan Water System, and it was a, one of our largest water sources. But I did that as a caution, uh, precautionary basis. I took that, uh, not knowing, concerned, and suspecting that could this thing move across Halava Valley in the groundwater? Because the natural groundwater flow, I still believe is still across the valley, uh, that the, that we're going to have to take just a very conservative, safe approach. And, and it looks like that was the right decision. Uh, these wells are, these three wells will remain shut down, and restart is uncertain. The next slide, please. And really, this calls for the need for more thorough, aggressive investigation by the Navy with the support of the regulators, uh, Department of Health and the EPA. Board of Water Supply, we are actually going out and drilling our own monitor wells to help with this effort too, because we understand, uh, more needs to be done quicker here. We need more data. Every monitoring well that the Navy has, and I think there's 35 or 38 of them right now, uh, should be tested on a weekly basis for PAH, uh, and also for PFAS, the forever chemicals per and polyfluoralkyl substances. We're recommending weekly testing because there's a general lack of, uh, enough monitor wells. More frequent testing could help us spot things that are moving, uh, is moving with the groundwater and give us better understanding of how groundwater and contamination might be spreading through the area. It reaffirms also the decision from the Red Hill Vi Alliance, so, uh, Water Alliance Initiative that involved the governor, the mayor, the city county Honolulu, the chair of the city council, Speaker of the Senate, Speaker of the House, and the president of the Senate, and the Board of Water Supply signing on to this, where the need of much more aggressive, uh, efforts to the investigation, and also providing the funding necessary for research and investigation and cleanup remediation. Next, please. Okay, I think, uh, I think that's where I'm going to end it, uh, right now. I'm very, um, passionate for this issue, uh, this issue, because water is life. We cannot have, uh, we cannot live without clean drinking water. And right now, you know, we need to understand the nature and extent of the impacts of this fuel facility on our drinking water resources. I'll just say, I'll close with this. Halava Shaft, which is, we shut down in December of 2021. And it's only about 5,000 feet to the northwest of the Red Hill Field Tanks, almost right directly across the valley. We're now confirming detections of PFAS forever chemicals in our Halava Shaft, something that we didn't see in 2020 and 2021. But we started to see it first in 2022, and now we're seeing it all the time in 2024. Whether or not it's coming out of Red Hill, I don't know. I do know that the Navy did conduct a baseline survey of their monitor wells for PFAS at, at our request, our urging, I appreciate they did that. They did find PFAS at multiple locations in their monitor well network at the Red Hill Facility and just field facility and nearby. Uh, so, there needs to be more aggressive, uh, analysis, more investigation, and more testing. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Uh, I'm going to take the opportunity to go first, um, but I do have a ton of questions. So, um, on, on your values here, you don't have listed the Halava Shaft, you don't have listed the Ka'amilo Shaft, you don't have listed the Monalua Wells, and you don't have listed the Ia Gulch Wells. Is there a reason why?
We haven't detected PAH there.
Okay, so in the Halava Wells, that's literally right before the Ia Wells. And you didn't detect anything there?
Well, you got to remember, Chair, this whole area covers like maybe four square miles. Uh, these wells are about 12 inches or 16 inches, 14 inches in diameter. So you could have a well, uh, that seems to line up with the Red Hill Field Tanks, but really, there's so much different distance between the wells, and it's over a large area that we didn't detect it. We did have a slight detection at our Halava Wells. Department of Health pointed it out at the Field Tank Advisory Committee meeting, I appreciate that. So slight detection at Halava Wells, the detection at Ia Wells, and also a very similar detection at the nearby, uh, Monitor Well Number 24, the Navy.
Have you had any detections at the Monalua Wells?
No.
So, so, okay, uh, the other question?
So we're reporting what we detected for.
Right, right, okay. Um, so, right, we have an opportunity there where we have Halava Stream that runs literally right next to these storage tanks, correct?
Uh, South Fork Halava Stream, yeah.
Yes, okay, so water usually follows gravity, right, and goes downhill, correct?
Right.
Okay, so are you saying that the aquifer is going uphill? Because it's going in the opposite direction of Halava Stream.
So Chair, um, that section of Halava Stream right by the Red Hill Field Tanks is concrete lined. Um, so it flowed, water flows downhill. And so the, what I'm saying, the water table elevation at the Red Hill Field Tanks is higher than the water table elevation at our Ia Wells. So from about 19 feet to about 15, 16 feet at our Ia Wells. So that is, I think, flowing from higher to lower. And that is, uh, what we measured, we've measured for many, many years, uh, across this whole region because we monitor the condition of the aquifer, we want to know if the, the water levels are declining uh, because of over pumping or drought. Uh, that signals to us, you know, what, what types of water conservation measures we might have to implement.
Okay, uh, I got one more question and then one more statement, or two more questions, one more statement. Uh, one other question, is the Navy and the, and you folks, uh, taking, um, the measurements off the same samples?
Uh, no, they take, they, okay, so, good question. So we sample at our wells because we're able to access our wells and take our.
Has the Navy given you an opportunity to access their wells?
Uh, no, they haven't, they've given, given, we wanted to sample at Red Hill Shaft. Uh, they told us that we had to only do what they do exactly. Uh, what we want is actually to sample and be able to test freely for any kind of contaminants that we, we're looking for at our monitor wells, the five closest wells around the Red Hill Facility. So I welcome the opportunity, uh, to get access and to do something called split sampling, where they draw the sample, we'll take some of that water, put it in our own sample bottles, and we also welcome the opportunity for the Navy to do that at our sources. Our Halava Shaft, the cable car is broken, so we'll have to walk a football field-long tunnel down and walk back up, uh, to carry the samples.
So if I, if I go talk to the Navy and I ask them to give, one of the concerns would be?
Also, Chair, I could, uh, add to that.
Yeah.
If you could say that, allow us to be able to test for what we want to test for.
And would, would you be able to provide a list of that?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And we welcome that opportunity, if you can make that happen, thank you so much.
Um, and one of your issues is having access to the, to their wells as well too, right? Okay.
Right, and more, more recently, uh, there is a monitor well that they're getting a license from, uh, the city. It's in a park, uh, on, uh, in Milanani.
Okay.
Uh, because they had a, uh, fuel pipeline that ran from Wheeler Air Force Base in Milanani all the way to Pearl Harbor, and that fuel pipeline leaked, and maybe leaked, uh, 50,000 gallons of fuel. So they're taking groundwater samples in the area. We wanted to also be able to access their well, but, you know, we got resistance for, uh, from being able to access the, taking samples out of that well when, while they're doing it, and run our own tests.
Okay, uh, last question, um, so, uh, you said that you are proposing weekly testing? What is your testing policy?
Uh, for the wild wells that are closest to the Red Hill Facility, we're, we're doing it weekly.
Okay, and for?
And the reason for that.
For the Ia Wells?
Ia Wells is weekly.
Okay.
And I'll just say that for the Ia Wells, if it wasn't for weekly testing, we could have very well missed, uh, we suspect maybe a contaminant plume, uh, that passed quickly the well location. The well is a point in, in, in the ground, it doesn't move.
Right.
But the groundwater moves, the contaminants could be moving with the groundwater, and once it moves past this point, you may not be able to find it.
Correct, okay, that makes sense, okay, thank you. And, uh, last, lastest comment, I really do appreciate you shutting down these wells. Caution is definitely something that needed to happen during that time, so. So that was the right decision.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, opening up, Lawrence.
You know, because you shut down those three wells, um, what wells are making up the difference? And as far as those wells making up the difference, is the water level stabilizing those wells? Are you drawing down it more than before? What's going on at the other wells?
So what we've had to do, because we also have a large water system that's connected by pipes, we also have about 90 different well stations around the island. So when we shut down Halava Shaft for the Honolulu Water System, we had to actually, uh, tap other wells to make up the, the lost capacity, pump them a little bit more, where we monitor the chloride levels of the salt, saltiness of the water, because, uh, a lot of the freshwater aquifer on this side of the island especially, it's basically freshwater floating on saltwater because, uh, freshwater is lighter in density than saltwater. Uh, so we have to be careful not to over pump. We're also now bringing water from Waipahu all the way into Honolulu to meet the needs. Uh, we turned one well, our Kalamila Well that used to supply Honolulu, we turned it around to supply the Ia Halava Community. Uh, because we, we lost, uh, Ia Wells and Halava Wells, which supplies the Ia Halava Community.
As far as the pumping, though, other wells making up the difference, it's stabilized, or are you drawing it down because of these?
Uh, one well, our Beritania Wells, which has a nest of nine different wells, uh, at our offices on Beritania Street. When we started to hit it, pump it harder, we noticed the saltiness started to rise pretty rapidly. So we've since adjusted it to reduce the pumping rate out of Beritania Wells, and we've noticed the solid, uh, chloride levels are stable.
You have a question, because, um, I'm just wondering, say if you need to shut down another well, you're going to put additional strain on your existing system, and at a certain point, you're going to be drawing down more than what the well can handle, and we're going to be in trouble then, and we might have to start restricting construction or restricting water use. But we're not at that point now, but in the near future, how many wells can you shut down in the area? Can you shut all the wells down in that affected area? Are we going to be okay, or are we going to run short?
Right now, I think the, uh, right now, the, we have enough to supply the needs of the Ia Halava Community, but if we lost another well like Kalamila Wells, uh, that would be very difficult for this community. Because right now, this community has, uh, Ia Wells and Halava Wells shut down too. The only well, the wells that are remaining are Ia Gulch Wells, which is further up in the heights, that supplies the upper areas, higher elevation areas of the Ia Community. Uh, and also our Kanohe Wells over by Pearl Ridge on Kanohe Street. Uh, but on this side of the system, we only have the Ia Gulch Wells. And, and because we turned the Kalamila Wells, which is near Ia High School around to actually supply this area, we're able to keep up with the needs. So the question that I, and I mentioned this at the council when they discussed the resolution of this matter, and I hallow the council for supporting. of this matter, and I mahalo the council for supporting more aggressive efforts to test and to investigate this Red Hill contamination issue. If there is a plume of PH chemicals moving westward, what is the next closest well? And, and when we look at our system, it's Ka'amilo Wells. So we're looking at options there. We continue to test for PAH at Ka'amilo Wells. We haven't detected it yet, but is it only a matter of time? So this is kind of bringing back, almost like deja vu from twenty twenty one, where I had to make decisions without a lot of information, taking a cautious approach for our community.
Okay.
Chair, could I just add some?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Higa, we're also being very aggressive in our outreach to people that are using a lot of water. In fact, Stephen, right now, we're in the process of contacting the top two hundred in this community of water users. So if you live in a condo, you sit on a condo board, you may be getting a letter from us, and we're happy to come out, do an audit, and work with you. Thank you.
All right, let's, anybody else, board members? Danny?
Question, first mahaluni to you and your staff for, for all of your work and reiterating what, what Chair Woodhead said. I have a couple of questions. Have there been any PFAS detects in the BWS system in this area after, I know there was a blip at Ka'amilo last April, but?
Yeah, Ka'amilo, we had PFAS detections, too, but we also had, for a while, consistent PFAS detections at our Halawa Wells, which is shut off. That's right along Halawa Heights Road. Then more recently, we're now finding it consistently at our Halawa Shaft. And our Halawa Shaft, we're not even pumping it. If you've been down into Halawa Shaft, you walk through the tunnel, at the very end of the tunnel, you see a window, and you could look down at the top of the aquifer, the water table. We're taking a sample right out of that pool at the end of the tunnel without the pumps running, and we're now finding PFAS there.
And then, I know in previous conversations, the Board of Water Supply, as well as affected families, had been asking the Navy for a list of contaminants, essentially of what was stored in the facility, both for medical reasons as well as to be able to actually run tests at monitoring wells. Have you been provided with that? Or is that something you're still asking for?
You mean past leaks or what kind of chemicals?
Yeah, whatever was stored so that you can actually test for that.
Yeah, so we can start to know where to look.
Right.
What types of things to look for. No.
So you're still waiting for that list as well?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think the issue is being very transparent about how this facility was used in its past. It's now destined for hopefully permanent closure, and so there's no need to really be secretive about this information. It's, it'll help by if everybody understands what we're dealing with in terms, what is the problems potentially.
Agreed. And then I don't know if this is a question for your, it might be a Navy question, but do you know how often the Navy currently tests for PAH? You folks are requesting for one.
So shortly after the A triple F concentrate liquids spilled near Addet Number Six from their A triple F firefighting foam system, they spilled thirteen hundred gallons just near the entrance of Addet Number Six, a tunnel that leads into the Red Hill Facility, and that seeped into, flowed on the ground and seeped into the ground. I said, I requested from the Secretary of Defense to start immediately doing at least monthly testing of all monitor wells at the Red Hill Facility. The regulators, I think, are only requiring testing at a subset of the monitor wells, I think it might have been nine monitor wells. I think they're doing that maybe by monthly, but maybe some of the Navy staff here can answer that question. But my request is to do it at all their monitor wells. So when they did the baseline survey testing of all their monitor wells back in September, October of last year, I think they was maybe a little surprised. I was a little surprised. They found PFAS detections at a number of different locations, including some of the older forms of PFOS chemicals, PFOS primarily. So that, to me, spoke, there potentially could be a bigger problem that we want to get, get a better understanding of. We don't know the history, life history of this facility, we don't know what type of solvents or cleaners, firefighting systems. When I asked the question about A triple F of the Navy after that spill back in twenty twenty two, about one year after the twenty twenty one event, they said they had no other A triple F systems, but then I, they're, they're currently doing a super fun type of circular investigation for PFOS contamination at Red Hill, and that's covered under the Restoration Advisory Board. They, they meet and they talk about that, the investigation plan. They were storing PFAS at Red Hill from the sixties. So I guess I want to really have a better understanding of this life history of this facility.
All right, any other questions from board members?
Yeah, Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank you for your diligence and making sure that our water supply is safe, and also for a very nice presentation. But as a scientist, I find it a little bit disingenuous that you didn't include a lot of the monitoring wells that tested negative. If you had that on your graph, it would kind of help support the conclusion that you actually verbally said is that we're not sure. So right when I looked at your, your, your numbers, that like, oh, hey, it looks like it directly is coming from Red Hill. But if you look at all the wells that were negative, it raises a question that, hey, we, we can't really prove it, it's still a possibility, like you said, but I would hope that if you are going to modify your presentation, that you include the monitoring wells that did test negative.
That's a very good point, Mr. Glenn. One of the, the reasons why we didn't want to add on more because it, the, the table would become extremely large and very difficult to read, because I think they have around thirty eight different monitor wells. But that's a good point. And I want to be clear, these are monitor wells that had detections, and the detections were about, sure, within a year of the November twenty twenty one event in their monitor well networks, Red Hill. And then now, two years later, two and a half years later, we're finding it across the valley. So it begs the question, and I think it just drives home, home the need for more thorough investigation, quickly as we can. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and start moving on. Thank you for your presentation. Super informative, and really appreciate you coming tonight and explaining all this to us.
Thank you, members, mahalo.
Mahalo. Okay, moving on. City Presentation, Sewer Service Charge Increase Proposal. Aloha.
Okay, well, good evening, Chair. Roger Babcock, Director of Department of Environmental Services, thanks for having me here. Committee members, board members. There is a, there is a handout, and so I'll kind of go through this and be happy to answer any questions. I, I think most folks have heard by now that we're proposing some increases in the sewer fees, and we have a proposal to increase the sewer fee each year over the next ten years, beginning July first of twenty twenty five. The actual increases are, are shown in the, in the handout. This handout for folks that are online and in the audience is available on our website at Honolulu.gov/ENV. And there's a, it is one of the banner items, so you can directly go to the information contained here and additional information. The, the actual sewer, the fee increases that are proposed are nine percent per year, each year for six years, followed by an eight, seven, six, and five percent increases in the, in years seven through ten. Just, just as a way of introduction, this is, I'm, pardon me, Environmental Services, we care, take care of wastewater and solid waste for the city. So that's refuse and sewer. The sewer enterprise is a, is an enterprise service, so it exists on the sewer fees alone. In other words, it doesn't receive funds from the general fund, AKA property taxes. So the sewer enterprise is funded by sewer fees. So the sewer fees need to be adjusted to meet the revenue requirements for the expenditures for the sewer operations. And so sewer operations are the collection system, which is twenty one hundred miles of pipe, and thousands of manholes, as well as seventy two wastewater pump stations and our nine wastewater treatment plants, as well as the disposal facilities and reuse facilities associated with those. So as was noted, the sewer fees last went up on July first of twenty sixteen, and so it's been eight and a half years since sewer fees have increased. However, costs and have, have increased over that time period, and they continue to increase. And so that's one of the reasons for, for the need for an increase, is increasing costs. Another reason that we need to increase fees is to fund a very large capital improvement program that we have, which is shown in, you know, on, on the graph, and we have about between twenty twenty five current year and twenty forty, that fifteen year period, we have a over ten billion dollar capital improvement program. And our capital improvement program, like BWS and other, other utilities, unlike rail, is not cash funded, it is funded, is debt funded, so we issue bonds like, like the rest of the city does. City issues general obligation bonds, and we issue sewer bonds, sewer revenue bonds. So those are tax fee, tax free revenue bonds that we pay a very low rate on, about four percent, very similar to the treasury rate. But it does require that we pay the debt service on, on those, on that debt, which we use to do most of our capital improvement program. So we don't generate the ten point one billion dollars, for example, we generate a fraction of that and then finance it over thirty year period with those bonds. So the, in addition to those two things, we, part of the capital improvement programs are to update and upgrade and modernize our tech, our, our treatment plants and our other things, other facilities. We also, some of that includes new requirements that come out from the EPA and the State Department of Health. So we have to periodically add additional processes. So for example, we're adding, we have to add disinfection in Ka'ila and in Mauna Oole Huli and in, in Wainai in the near future. So those are very expensive projects. The, so the handout shows the kind of what a typical bill will, will, typical water user, the average water user, what the kind of increases that they will see in dollar amounts in their bill over the, over the ten year period. And you can see that it's increasing about twelve dollars, for example, per month for the average water user on July first of twenty twenty five, and they see similar amounts per month in the outgoing years. The, we're proposing to do two things with the fee structure, with the fees to assist with affordability. The first one is to change the fee structure slightly to allow water, sewer users, customers to have a greater control over the amount of their bill. In other words, it incentivizes, incentivizes water conservation, which is also part of the structure of the Board of Water Supply Bill. But basically, it changes the amount of the fixed fee or the base charge, adjusts that downward as a percentage of the bill. And so if you look at the table, the fixed charges are listed there, the current fixed charge per month is seventy seven dollars and fifty five cents, and over the next four years, that number actually goes up just a little bit, and then it goes down. And so the fixed charge decreases to seventy four dollars and seventy four cents in, and on July first of twenty twenty eight. In between, it's very similar to what it is today. And then what happens then is the volumetric charge goes up. So if you use less water or very little water, your bill will not go up as much. And so that is a way to, to address affordability. Another way is we're initiating a customer assistance program, which we call Customer Assistance Residential Environmental Services, or CARES, and this will allow those that are eligible to, to receive a credit on their, on their bill of twenty to twenty five dollars per month. And so that would essentially erase the increase for some folks for, for a number of years. And so those are the things that we are looking at for this, for the sewer fee increase, and I'd be happy to, to answer any, any questions that folks have.
Okay. Board members, Jane.
That's correct. Yeah, so the, the question was, do these increases apply to all types of customers? And that is correct. So what I've shown in the, in the handout is the residential. It's a big firework. Set off the alarm. The, yeah, so I've shown the actual rates for residential customers, single family residential, multifamily residential, and non-residential also increased by the same amounts, nine, nine percent per year and seven, eight, seven, six, and five.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I'm looking at this, I'm, am I reading this right? In the ten years, basically, the water bill's going to go up a hundred, basically a hundred and ten percent?
Hundred and fifteen percent, that's correct. Yes, it's going to double, a little over double.
Okay. Mr. Higa?
Oh, just to disclose, I was on your advisory board.
Thank you.
And as far as how you're going to set up this fifty fifty, the majority of the costs, the way I was looking at it, is going to be borne or buried by the residential users, because as far as being fifty fifty, if you look at how, say, the University of Hawaii or educational facilities operate, they don't operate three hundred sixty five days of the year. Residential homes operate three hundred sixty five days of the year. Office buildings, when they're not occupied, as far as their water usage is going to drop off. Hotels out of season, their water bills are going to drop off. So as far as how it's written, and I didn't vote for the fifty fifty, by the way, so I was concerned with this because majority of the cost is going to be placed upon the residential users. And I had a question during our meetings was, if we run short, if the ENV runs short, what are you guys going to do? And the response was, we're going to increase rates. But the thing is, say if you have an overage, I was asking if you can give that overage back to the residential users. Is my analysis correct as far as some, some customers being more on a seasonal variation and the residential customers being like the base being charged because they use water three hundred sixty five days out of the year? So some customers are going to be charged less because you go fifty fifty.
So the, there are seasonal variations in water use, and that's across all, all customer classes. The idea that non-residential customers, commercial customers, would, the proportion of the total revenue that comes in could change is, is, is not something that we are sure about at, at this point. It is, it is, the, the fee increase is based on figuring out the revenue project, revenue requirements in the future, and then doing an increase based on, for everybody across the board, based on, based on that need. It, it is unclear whether what you're describing will, will happen or not, and we're, we're not sure about that. The, but the intention with the, changing the percentages and, and reducing the percent that's a fixed fee is to give all customers more control over, over their bill. And so everyone could see, you know, that benefit if you. And so everyone could see, you know, that benefit if you, if you reduce water use. In general, price pressures don't change water use all that much. As, as Board of Water Supply data shows, when they increase rates, water use doesn't really change very much because the price pressure isn't that great compared to, you know, compared to other things, like a price of a tank of gas or, or other things. So we, we don't know, we don't know the answer to that. The, in terms of a, a give back, if, if revenues are perhaps higher than anticipated, say they come in greater than an additional 9% in a, in a given year, generally, we, we wouldn't then do some sort of cash back or some sort of credits. The reason for that is that in ongoing into the future, there's, there's always a projection of additional revenue requirements. And so if there were, and, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of assumptions about how we pay for things. So if we pay, if, if additional revenue comes in, it would be spent on projects instead of borrowing money, probably. So that provides savings in the long run for, for everyone. So, because you take interest on the, on the borrowed funds. So there's, there's really never an excess where you would want to give money back. It would mean that you'd need smaller increases in, in revenue requirements or fee increases into the future.
Hey Lawrence, one more question.
As far as modeling to get a more accurate picture as far as how it would affect seasonal users, for instance, hotels or say the University of Hawaii, you can always look at their past water records as far as being on the 70-30 charge rate, then put them on the 50-50 charge rate. And just by doing that, you would get a more accurate model as far as how much the university would be paying for their water bill.
Yeah, so, so right now, the revenue requirements are all on an annual basis. So it, it isn't clear whether it will make any difference.
Okay, that, that's for commercial, but as far as doing it on a month-to-month, the residential side is on a month-to-month basis.
Yeah, so everybody's on a month-to-month. You're, you're right. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, board members? All right, go ahead. Run. Mike, Mike?
If you look into the impact on the farming agricultural industry.
So the farming and agricultural industry would have a very, very small sewer bill, if, if any. They would be affected by water, you know, water rates to the extent that they use BWS water. But we're basically just based on sewer. And so if you don't have a sewer, a sewer connection and equivalent single-family dwelling units, then you really don't have sewer bill in agriculture.
Okay. All right, with that, I appreciate the report, the brief. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there is on the agenda a motion to support or oppose the sewer service charge increase proposal. Is there anybody who wants to make a motion either way, to support or to oppose? Yes, you can make a motion to oppose. Okay. Anybody want to second that motion to oppose? Okay. No second for the motion?
I'll second.
Oh, hold on. Who, who seconded? Russell? Okay.
Yes.
Open for discussion? Anybody want to discuss the opposition to this? Go ahead.
Yeah, although no one wants to have any fee increased, I think the way that this is presented with the incentive for the consumer to decrease the amount they pay by restricting their water lose, use, it make, it makes sense. I mean, we have that consent decree, we're stuck with it, we got to pay for it in some way. And for me, the proposal that you have given us seems fair. Not welcome, but fair.
Okay. Any other discussion, comments, concerns, questions? Anybody online? Okay. Well, we can, we can, it is, sort of. We can also say that we don't like it. That's what we're doing. But if all boards on the island do it, right, there's solidarity in numbers, right? So, so that's, that's the idea.
As far as opposing it based on how it's written now, is there any way I can make edits to the board or to E&amp;V as far as what is more acceptable as far as a percentage rate? Because my personal feeling, I'd rather have everybody carry the same load rather than placing the load more on the residential customers. Because basically, they're running 365, 365 days of the year. As far as having a residential customer cut back on water, they cannot, they're not going to cut down the amount of times they flush their toilet. They're not going to cut down the amount of times they wash their laundry or wash their clothes. So when you're asking it to cut down, you know, it's very hard being that they're already in like a, a routine at their home, you ask them to cut down. More or less, everybody now has water conservation fixtures. So as far as asking the residential users to carry a majority of the burden, that's the thing that I'm, I'm opposed to. It was more like a bigger split as far as the fix side. See, even if we went 60-40, I'd rather have that versus a 50-50. At least that way, the base would be covered by 60% of the users. But yeah, I'm not sure what the procedure is as far as putting my reasons why I'll oppose.
Yeah, I mean, you, I mean, you can make a motion saying that you oppose the current plan with the, you know, suggestion or an amendment, I guess, of this percentage.
Like covered by what I just said?
What is it? Is it 60-40, 75-25?
What? I'd rather see, in fact, I'd rather see it be 70-30. Just go back to the regular and have everybody pay the 70% fixed charge, a 30% variable charge. But if you have to look at 50-50, I prefer 60-40 than a 50-50 because I want the cost to be spread evenly among all your users, not place more on residential users.
Is there a reason why you went from 70-30 to 50-50? You said there was a cost savings associated with that?
Yeah, so, well, right now, the, the way it works is if you use very little water, you're a low, very low water user, say you're a senior couple, two, two people in a house, your fixed charge is $77.55, same as if you have, you're a very large water user. And so even if you use no water at all, you're going to pay $77.55. By, by reducing, by changing the portion that's fixed, folks that use little water will not have, will not see nearly as large of an increase in a bill over time. So for example, there's a ta, we have a table on our website which shows that if you use 2,000 gallons a month, which is a very small water user, your bill over the 10 years really only goes up 70%, not 115 or 125%. Whereas if you're a large water, very large water user, your, your water bill goes up a lot more. So in reality, large water users like hotels or whatever, they actually end up paying, we end up paying the same, everybody pays their same fair share. But we'll do, we'll, we'll do that analysis. And, and to answer Mr. Higa's question more, the, the place to bring that up would be at city council when it's heard. So there's going to be hearings where the bill will be read and there'll be questions from public council.
How long do you think it'll take you to do that analysis?
To do, to do the analysis of the proportion? Well, so we actually did and present to the, to the, to the board, to our advisory board that Mr. Higa was on, we did give example bills for now, through the, through the 10-year increase for a bunch of non-residential water users. And you can see that it goes up the same, the same proportion, depending on, depending on what type of user you are, how many, how many units you have. So hotels, it's based on number of rooms, just like a condominium or a townhouse.
Could I invite you back and you could present the differences between the two to us?
Sure. And I think, I, I could. And it's also, it's also on our website, there's examples of non-residential bills and how they'll go up. The one, the example that's shown here is just.
I think, yeah, you said non-residential, but I think we're concerned with residential bills.
So residential, so residential is what's presented in the, in the flyer.
Okay.
Or it's for the, it's for the average water user, which is 9,000 gallons a month on the bill. The average means if you take all water use from all res, all residential customers and divide by the number of customers, you get 9,000 gallons per month.
Okay.
That's different than the median. The median is when half the customers use more and half.
Right.
And that number is 6,000 gallons a month.
Okay.
And, oh, sorry, I think I might have spoken a couple of things.
I think the leg just needs to be spun back out. Yeah, there you go. There you go. Okay.
The, so those numbers, those numbers are available.
Okay.
On the, on the website.
So there's a different, there's, there's numbers that show the difference between 50-50 and 70-30?
No, those numbers aren't shown.
Okay, that's what I'm asking about. Is there a way you can do that analysis and come back to us and show that to us?
We, yeah, so we, we did do that analysis and we, we presented it to the, to our advisory committee and they voted whether to keep it at 70-30.
Right, right. But can you present it here, though? If we invite you back?
We could, I could, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. All right, Jane.
You addressed my concern or my question at the beginning of your talk about why the structure was, and what, why the structure is instead of the general fund, but it wasn't that simple enough for me to understand. Why are you raising revenues through this rather than through the general fund raising our property taxes? Put it very simply.
Yeah, good, good question. So the sewer fund was established in, I think, 1998 to be a separate entity from the rest of the general fund. So it's like Board of Water Supply. Board of Water Supply was, is separate, is semi-autonomous. So they exist only, it's not aligned on a budget. So all of the revenues for Board of Water Supply come from the Board of Water Supply fee, the user fee. All revenues for sewer operations come from the sewer fee. So they were set up that way to be separate, mostly so that money that came in from sewer fee couldn't be used for anything else. So that was what was, had happened before, was sewer fees were charged, it came in and went into the general fund, but there was no correlation between that and how much was allocated to sewer operations. So it was made into an enterprise fund, a separate account, where the sewer funds go into a separate account and that account can't be touched by anything else. Similarly, sewer fund, sewer operations can't tap into anything else, just like Board of Water Supply, they can't tap into funds, to the general fund. That has to go to police and fire and all other operations of the city.
So this enables you to be able to tap into other funds?
It does not, no, we're not able to now and we will not be able to as part of this.
Okay.
It's a separate self-staying operation.
Okay. All right. Hey, hey, Mike, can I ask, I mean, Lawrence, can I ask you a question real quick? Can we table your motion, by the way? And the reason why I want, is because I want him to come back with the 70-30, 50-50 for residentials and I want to see what that difference is before we, before I want to make a vote on it. I mean, I don't know how everybody else feels about it, but.
I'll email to all the board members as far as my concern and possible scenario, say with the University of Hawaii, just so that we have.
Yeah, I don't necessarily, Curtis, how, with sunshine law, would that impacted at all if he did that? With, yeah, it'd be better, I mean, you've already had, made your concerns known now, right? Or is there more?
As far as their analysis, I want to see an actual, real-life condition. If he's going to do analysis, I don't want him to be pulling numbers that are not accurate. If he pulls numbers, I'd rather have him pull like, say, the University of Hawaii, because they have records as far as their water usage on a month-to-month basis. And then instead of doing the 70-30 split, do you have a 50-50 split and just see for the past year, all the billings would be different versus the 70-30 versus 50?
Are you, you got that? Can you do something like that?
Yeah, well, so, I mean, if you look at the chart, so if we just go residential for a second, your question was, you know, there's a chart that it shows the year and it shows the fixed charge and it shows the volumetric charge, right? And then it shows the total bill. So the current total bill is $110.89. If we switch the proportions, the numbers on the right-hand side, the total bill, that last column, are not going to change. The only thing that will change is the two numbers in the other two columns, but they will have to add up to the same number. So we switched the proportion, but not the total. So if you increase the fixed fee to 70%, then you reduce the volumetric charge. But the numbers add up to the same amount. That's the way we do the analysis. We need a certain amount of revenue and so that's determined by what the total bill is for everybody. And then you can adjust what part is volumetric and what part is fixed to benefit presumably
So what you're saying is, is based on this chart, you have like, let's say for a current, $77.55 for fixed and volumetric is $33.34. It would go to basically like $50 for fixed and $50 for volumetric, right? Or 55, actually.
That's correct.
Okay, got it.
Just in layman's terms, because I'm just, I've got confused on what you're saying. Why would we want to save water if that N number's going to always be the same and you're just adjusting your volumetric number? So no matter what we do, if we try to save water, that N number's going to be the same.
No, that's not, that's not correct. The volumetric side, the fixed you won't be able to, but the volumetric you could, yeah, you can save on, right? By conserving.
So this is if your water use doesn't change. This gives you, this, these are the numbers for using 9,000 gallons a month. But if you use 8,000 gallons a month, you change your use to 8,000 gallons a month, there's a bigger reduction in your volumetric charge than there would be today. So it allows you to save more money by, yeah.
Lawrence brought up the scenario of raising too much money and you said that it would be saved for other things. Well, that goes against only using it for sewer improvement.
No, thanks for that question. So no, it would be used for sewer projects. It can't be used for anything else. That's the way the sewer fund works. So any money that goes into the sewer fund, either from sewer fees or revenue bonds, can only be spent by law on sewer projects and sewer operations.
So, so this, this, this bill right here, like what we're looking at, that's buried within the current Board of Water Supply bill that we get every month, correct?
It is, it is in your bill, yes.
Yes. So, so that would be stripped out of our current water bill and would be billed separately?
Well, that's a different thing, but currently, no. Right now, it stays on your water bill and it will, you'll still receive bill in the same way. What will change, and, and your bill is itemized by, shows these numbers. It does show your fixed fee and it shows how much water you used and what your volumetric charge is and it's $6.34 per 1,000 gallons. And it's going to increase to these numbers here. Then, and it will continue to, to show those things. And in 2025, it'll show it's not $77.55, it's going to, it's going to itemize it and say it's $77.83.
Right.
And then it will show you, your, your, your new volumetric charge. So.
But it's not going to be a separate bill from the Board of Water Supply bill. It's going to be buried in that, or itemized in that bill.
Itemized in that bill, at least for the next year, year or two. So we are currently in a separation process of the billing. So we will be doing separate billing beginning by, in 2026. That's a, that's an ongoing project right now that we're working on with Board of Water Supply. So there will be separate billing in the future.
Okay.
But we'll still continue to always use the volumetric water data from Board of Water Supply. It'll just be a different, a different bill.
So I can anticipate my water bill going down and this going up or this being incorporated?
So, yeah. Yeah, so your water bill will, they have increases programmed already as well, but the total bill that you get from BWS will be just water. It would, now it's water and sewer, it'll be just water. So that'll be smaller and your new sewer bill will be also smaller than the current bill that you get, which incorporates both.
Okay. All right. All right, one more, any other points of discussion? All right, uh, one more, any other points of discussion and then move on to the vote for the motion to oppose, uh, uh, the service charge increase proposal? Okay, nothing heard. Okay, let's go ahead and do a vote. A roll call, yeah? Uh, the motion is to oppose, uh, the sewer, sewer, sewer service charge increase proposal given to us by, uh.
That's presented.
Yeah.
E N V.
Okay, Anderson.
Yeah. By E N V, Dr. uh, Matt.
Anderson. Abstain. Arakaki. Absent. Burgess.
Burgess is online.
Abstain.
Abstain. Clark. Abstain. Esperito. Esperito.
Oppo, do you?
Microphone.
To say you oppose the service.
If, if you oppose the service charge, uh, proposal, um, you vote aye.
Right.
No. Fitch. No. Glenn. No. Higa. Okay, no, meaning you oppose the charge.
And that's a yes, Mike, or Lawrence? Yeah, your motion was to oppose. So you say yes? Yes. Okay.
Uh, Imamura, absent. Mizusawa, absent. Sugimura. No. Suji.
Yes.
Aye. Whitfield?
Aye.
Aye. Wood?
Yes.
On a vote of four ayes, four noes, and three abstentions, uh, motion does not pass.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, thank you, board members.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, much appreciated. All right, moving on, uh, the resolution in support of establishing an empty homes tax in Honolulu. Has everybody had an opportunity to look at this, this over? Okay. Any, any, uh, let's go ahead and, anybody want to make a motion to, um, to approve this, uh, approve support for this resolution? Yep?
Second.
Anybody want a second? Okay, Danny, you second? Okay. All right, uh, open for discussion. Anybody want to make any comments?
Can you guys repeat it in the microphone, please?
Uh, okay, so the, the, the motion on the table is to approve the resolution in support of establishing an empty homes tax in Honolulu.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Danny.
Um, just, observation, like, a lot, I think a lot of the concerns that we had raised last month, um, were outlined, I think, in Councilmember Cordero's, uh, notes in her, in her memo.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments? Okay, Curtis?
Me, me.
Oh, go ahead.
I'll be oppo, I'll be opposing any of this, this result, to support it.
Okay.
Primarily because, number one, ownership of rural property is of United States Constitution, as well as Hawaii State constitutional right. And it's, and the way the county disordinates, the way I'm reading it, it's like trying to, government trying to tell you what to do with your own property. And I don't believe government should be telling us what to do with our own property. If we have a, make a decision to keep it empty because for whatever reason we're keeping it empty, we ought not to pay an extra tax. This tax is above and beyond the real property tax that you, you, everyone pays anyway. And in fact, the county passed recently for investors, you know, a super tax, right? For the, for the value of those that, uh, that are not using for residential purposes, and it's, uh, over a million dollars, they pay a high rate of tax. This is in addition to that, and I just think this is, uh, overreach, and they should not be telling the residents and, and people what to do with its own property, especially something that is, you know, is, is, it's actually in our constitution, you know? That we have a right to, to property, any taking of that, that of the fair compensation, which is basically firm market value. Anyway, that's all people.
Thank you, Russell, for that. Really appreciate that. Good argument. Uh, Francie, did you have something you want to say?
I agree with Russell. Um, again, we are sworn to uphold the constitutional government that we have, and this is government overreach.
All right, any other comments, questions, concerns, statements? Okay, all right, can we do a roll call?
Roll call, um, this is the, um, voting on the resolution in support of establishing an empty homes tax. Anderson. Aye. Arakaki, absent. Burgess.
Aye.
Aye. Clark. No. Esperito. Aye. Fitch. No. Glenn. Aye. Higa. No. Imamurau, absent. Mizusawa, absent. Sugimura.
No.
No. Suji.
No.
No. Whitfield.
No.
No. Wood.
Aye.
Aye. On a vote of five ayes and six noes, um, no abstaining, um, the resolution is not adopted.
Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on, review and motion to support or oppose liquor license application for Encore Baroke? 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 Oh, okay, uh, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Chair, Board Members and Community, Robin Melchor and Ms. Tsukcha Setogawa, on behalf of the application for liquor license transfer for Encore Baroke. And I know, um, before, uh, the, I was given certain questions that the board members, and I answered them, and we're here to answer any other questions that the board may have with respect to the transfer application. And just wanted to let you know that Ms. Setogawa has been managing the establishment for the last five years without any complaints or incidents, and actually, the bar and grill has been there for over thirty years.
Okay. Uh, board members, any questions in regards to Mr. Higa?
As far as, um, I know I had a question regarding dancing, and you said there's gonna be no dancing.
Yeah, there's no dance floor, there's six tables, there's barely any room for the six tables, and the establishment is about eleven hundred square feet, it's not very large.
As far as the decision on that, it's by the commission, but, right? As far as, say, we agree to have that liquor license transferred over, and next month, they say, hey, we, we want to do dancing. It's up to the liquor commission at that time, we determine if there's gonna be dancing allowed? How does that work?
So, in order to have dancing, you have to have a dance floor, and like I said, there is no room for a dance floor. And yes, the license, because the way the liquor commission has the license, it's, um, it's, they category, categorize it as dancing and music, because even if you play background music, which what she has, and so sometimes she has, like, some karaoke, it's still one category. So if she wanted to say, you know, put in dancing, okay, a dance floor and stuff like that, I mean, she'd have to go in and make a request to have dancing, but that bar and grill has been there for, like I said, over thirty years. There's no space for dancing, that's not something that she ever wanted to do or had, or any prior owners has done. So there really is no room for dancing there.
Because, yeah, I did, um, some research as far as if this is a new establishment, it would have different criteria, but I understand it's existing, so basically, you're there for a long time, so as far as meeting the guidelines for a new establishment, you don't have to meet that.
Right, yes.
Okay, any other questions?
Just had a question on location, where, where is this bar?
So it's in the shopping mall by.
Aia Town Village.
Oh, okay, okay, down, down that side, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. All right, uh, any other questions, comments? Okay.
Can't hear anything.
What's happening is the license is being transferred to a new owner. So Ms. Setogawa, she's purchasing the business from the previous owner. And with the way the liquor commission has it, is any type of dispenser general license, which is what this establishment has, the liquor commission requires, um, to notify the neighborhood board, the owners, yeah, in the community within the five hundred feet radius, in case they wanted to.
Yeah.
Have any comments and stuff, so that's what.
Yeah, so it's more about, like, if there's been a history of complaints and things like that, they want to make sure that the neighborhood boards are aware and, uh, will provide input on future approvals of those liquor licenses. So.
Chair Wood, I'd like to make a, uh, motion to support their liquor license application for Encore Baroke.
Okay, second, anybody? Hey, Jane, right, uh, we've already had some discussion, any more discussion? Okay, all right, can we do a roll call? Yeah.
Anderson. Uh, Arakaki, absent. Burgess.
Abstain.
Abstain. Clark. Aye. Higa. Abstain. Esperito. Abstain. Fitch. Abstain. Glenn. Aye. Imamura, absent. Mizusawa, absent. Sugimura. Aye. Suji.
Aye.
Aye. Whitfield.
Abstain.
Abstain. Wood.
Aye.
Aye. Vote of five ayes, no noes, and five abstain, uh, the motion is not adopted.
Okay. So we will make that recommendation to the liquor board? Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, thank you.
Something said, I didn't hear anything.
Yeah, we just voted out to make a recommendation. We'll just tell the liquor board that there's no decision made on it.
Basically, we're opposing, so I think that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, moving, moving on, uh, let's go ahead, uh, Congressman Case's office.
Chairman Wood, members of the board, thank you for having me, uh, to appear before you here, even though it's virtual.
Hey, Nestor, 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 sorry. Uh, we got, we got seventeen minutes, so give me the clip notes. Thank you, sir.
The clip notes, I was about to say that, sir.
Yep, um, I did post, uh, the fourth quarter neighborhood board report, uh, on, in the chat, uh, for your reading pleasure later for the members.
I just want to make one quick note, though, that, um, uh, one of the items, uh, if anyone wants to comment on whether or not the, um, federal government should undertake a study to determine whether, uh, kind of point should be designated as a natural heritage area, the comment period for the, for those that want to submit comments to the National Park Service is November twenty-fifth. That's the deadline to submit comments, Mr. Chairman. Um, just wanna, uh, some other points, uh, Congressman is back in DC, as most of the members of Congress are back there, except for those that are still waiting for their results from their voting. Um, and so one of the most pressing items, of course, will be whether or not we can extend or we can adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget, uh, as you know, we had to extend with that continuing resolution. That continuing resolution to fund the federal government expires on December twentieth, so hopefully before December twentieth, we'll have some action on that. Um, in October, uh, the, uh, Congressman did, um, announce that there was a forty million dollar grant that was awarded to a public-private partnership between the Navy, uh, Amaresco, as a company, and Hawaiian Electric to come up with a back, backup electric grid, uh, so that we can now make sure that the power stays on if the, uh, our friends at Hawaiian Electric's grid goes down. Um, one last thing, Mr. Chairman, on November twenty-third, Saturday morning, at the Oahu Veterans Center from nine AM to ten thirty AM, there's gonna be a, a talk story or town hall, if you will. Uh, we're inviting veterans to come and listen to Congressman Case. He wants to listen to them, uh, actually, their, um, concerns and needs. These, uh, this is open to all veterans and their, um, and their families and caretakers. Again, that's November twenty-third, Saturday, at the Oahu Veterans Center, that's in Salt Lake. The chairman, members of the board, open to any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. Board members, any questions for Congressman Case? Okay, nothing heard. All right, moving on, uh, Governor Green's office.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board and members of the community. General Sanmishi, representing the governor's office. Um, the governor has issued his November newsletter, and it's in the Google Drive and also, um, available on the governor's website, governor.hawaii.gov. One thing I wanted to point out in that is that the Attorney General's office has launched an online resource for people concerned about those that, those with serious mental illness and, uh, or substance abuse. And so, um, the Age Use Family Law Division is providing assistance with finding orders for assisted community treatment. So, um, there are many families that are dealing with that, and, and their families, and it's a service that the Attorney General's office is doing, to help guide people through that process for the, um, that are concerned about people who have, uh, serious mental illness that, and they become a danger to themselves and to others. So, I mean, that's available. Um, I need to apologize to this, uh, member Higa. I don't have the information you had requested about the wildfire accounting. Um, they're working on it, I was hoping to get something today, but I won't. But as soon as I receive it, I will email it to you. So if I get it before, even before the next board meeting, I will send you that, what I get. Um, that's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, board members, any questions for the governor's office? Okay, nothing heard, all right, much appreciated, thank you so much. Hey, uh, Hawaii Department of Transportation?
Good evening, uh, Chair Woods and members of the nine AM board, KCRI from State DOT Highway Division. At last month's meeting, I mentioned, I received an email from Senator Alafonte concerning the overgo trees blocking the signal heads at Kanuvi Street. Uh, during my quick field investigation, number first, on November first, the overgo had been cut back, so the traffic signal heads are now visible. And finally, I want to thank Tricia from Councilmember Cordero's office for a forty minutes email on November fourth about illegal dumping and graffiti along Commandment Highway from Bradford Drive all the way down to the H two three on-ramp, which is within the I M Procyon Neighborhood Board area. These pictures from Tricia shows the trash at the bus stop at the intersection of Arizona-Meara Place and Commandment Highway. During a quick field investigation this morning, I noticed that most of the trash was cleaned up. I also noticed a goose American picking up the empty beverage bottles. I also noticed our landscaping contractor, we're doing some landscaping near Arizona-Meara Enchants. Uh, this concludes my, uh, report.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Uh, board members, any questions? Okay. Thank you. All right, uh, Senator Wakai's office? Okay, nothing heard. Okay, Senator Alafonte's office?
Uh, good evening, everyone's, I'll make this really quick. This is Taylor on behalf of Senator Alafonte, he apologizes that he can't be there tonight. Um, firstly, I'd like to say congratulations to AIA High School for hosting their first homecoming game in five years. Um, that's really exciting, and we have responded to both board member Arakaki and Higa's inquiries concerning the Lahaina wildfire settlements and the parcel nine land on D H L lands. Um, and Senator Alafonte reached out to the property owners, um, from last meeting and shared concerns, and their contact information is available for, um, with the chair, um, and I'm available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Short and sweet, I loved it. Uh, any questions from the board? Okay, all right, thank you, thank you for your, uh, report. Okay, Representative Ichiyama's office? Okay, nothing heard, okay. Congratulations, by the way, so Representative, uh, Shimizu, so. What was yours? First, uh, first meeting, right?
Yes, that's, uh, how special AIA Neighborhood Board is. So aloha, chair.
Aloha.
Members of the board and community, uh, I just wanted to introduce myself as the newly elected House District Thirty-two representative, and, um, I'm here to work hard and serve the public and. And I'm here to work hard and serve the public and serve the community as best as I can. I'm committed to that. So thank you. Any questions?
Board members? Hey, you're off easy the first time around. Okay, thank you. And congratulations again. Okay, Representative Kong's office. Nope, okay. All right, community concerns from residents. Does any resident have any community concerns? I know I did receive one. I think you saw that earlier, right? So, but I don't know if she's still on. She participated all day. I can't, I can't really bring it up, right? Like, we can, what's that? Right? Okay, you can relay. Okay, we won't talk about it here. Okay, all right. I just don't, the, the rules, the whole sunshine rule say, I think it has to come from a community member, right? Yeah, okay. All right, moving on. Okay, board reports. For the executive, I just want to talk a little bit about the elections coming. So on December twentieth, the candidate and voter registration begins for the neighborhood board elections. Please, 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 please check to make sure that you have done the application. I don't want to repeat the last election where some folks thought they were not in the cycle, and they were. And then we had to make some concessions on at-large positions. So just make sure that you, that you, that you put in your registration for that, okay? February twenty-first, the candidate filing and voter registration deadline. So between December twentieth and February twenty-first, make sure that you, if you're interested in staying on this board, that you submit your registration at that time, okay? And then April twenty-fifth, the voting will begin, and on May sixteenth, the voting ends, okay? It's all right here. Yeah. So we can give you an extra one here. Just pass that down. Okay, so that's all I got from executive. Okay, moving on. Community relations and publicity. Mr. Arakaki is not here. Skip that. Parks are wrecked. Planning and zoning, emo?
Nothing at the moment.
Okay. Military and governmental affairs, Francie?
Just want to reiterate the Pearl Harbor Hickam Kalailo rap community meeting is December ten. Sorry, no, eleven is the Wednesday. And we don't have the agenda out yet. If you want to be added to the distribution list, Henry Curtis is the co-chair. And I put his email in the chat. It's henry.lifeoftheland@gmail.com.
Okay, thank you. All right, education and culture?
Last workday of the year, this Saturday. And then the folks that I'm following up with aren't present. Like Tracy and Richard said that they would check on porta potties. I don't know if anyone here knows whether or not we can use board funds for that. No, okay.
We can use board funds for like signage, things like that.
Okay, okay.
Uh, go ahead.
I have a question. We're on the Christmas parade. Does the board need to make any decisions now for the parade that's coming up?
I don't know, Lawrence. So is there any decisions that we normally do, Claire? I wasn't here, so. Yeah. Right. Right, right, right. I'm sure we can get a volunteer, myself included. Right. Right. Well, Claire said. Okay. All right, I don't think there's any voting or any decisions that need to be made on that. Right, we can participate, yeah, but anything, pass that out. Well, if you want to be included on the emails that Tracy and I and Curtis are kind of talking, we're trying to work out the signage and a couple of things. I can include you in that. Not, not, not in this particular. This is a little different.
Someone's saying something. I can't hear anything.
It's okay. It's this back, backside chatter.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Okay, with that, anything else? Okay. So we will be in recess for December twenty twenty-four. Our next meeting will be January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, so it'll be into the new year. So I'm wishing everybody a happy Thanksgiving, Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year. Because we won't be seeing each other until after. With that, meetings adjourned. Thank you so much for attending.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, Happy Thanksgiving, and Happy.